We're rationing now.
Oh, the first one, okay, I got it.
Six thirty PM, August seventh, two thousand nineteen. I'd like to call tonight's session of the City of Delaware Planning Commission to order. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Proll?
Here.
Mr. Vonek?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
Here.
Item number two on the agenda this evening, the approval of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on June or July seventeen, two thousand nineteen, as reported and transcribed. What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve the summary judgment. The summary?
Motion by Mr. Mansoros?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Abstain.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Moving on to item number three, regular business. Could the clerk please read item A into the record?
Item A, the Rice Building, case one, two thousand nineteen dash seventeen twenty-seven. A request by J. Jill Properties LLC for rezoning at fifty West Williams Street from B-three Community Business District to B-two Central Business District on approximately zero point one one nine acres. Case two, two thousand nineteen dash seventeen twenty-eight, a request by J. Jill Properties LLC for a combined preliminary and final development plan for the Rice Building at fifty West Williams Street on approximately zero point one one nine acre, zone B-two.
Yeah, the subject site, uh, Zone B-three has its zoning to the north, west, and south. To the east, it's B-two, which they're requesting, uh, for the subject site. Uh, currently, there's a building there and two large trees. Uh, give you some history of this, uh, back in, in May of two thousand eighteen, the owner purchased that, went through a lot of due diligence, uh, to get the site, uh, environmentally approvable. Last, last July, last week, uh, they went to Historic Preservation Commission, and they approved the demolition and design materials and color of a new building, construct a new building on this site. This is the existing building that's out there. As you can see, it's an eyesore. They're, uh, going to demolish this and construct a new building on the site. It would be similar to the existing building. It'll be moved about eighteen feet closer to West Williams Street. The main entrance would be off, uh, North Franklin Street. Secondary at, uh, entrance would be off West William. The nine parking spaces out front would remain as is today. Uh, there would be a rear entrance, uh, stairwell to the second floor of this, which would be a condominium, hence the reason for the rezoning. Uh, the B-three district, uh, does not allow, um, any residential. However, a B-two district allows, uh, residential on the second floor. Uh, that's similar to the, uh, majority of the downtown core is B-two, and we have several businesses in the downtown district that have apartments on the second and third floor. That is what the applicants requesting, uh, in this proposal. That would be consistent with the land use plan. This appears to be a practical extension of the B-two district across, uh, North Franklin Street to this site. Uh, from an engineering perspective, it's, uh, they're pretty much, the existing site plan would be similar, impervious surface would be similar, uh, no engineering drawings, no formal set of engineering drawings would be required. However, they would have to meet the stormwater design requirements per the city engineer, and they can work through those, uh, those details. This is the site plan, as I indicated, be moving the site closer to, uh, West Williams Street, which would, uh, bring it closer to the other existing buildings that, that front West William. The B-two would allow the, uh, second floor, uh, condominium unit. They are proposing signage on the, uh, North Franklin elevation. This is the elevations, uh, the south elevation's the top elevation that fronts, uh, East Williams Street. Uh, the bottom elevation is the elevation that fronts, uh, North Franklin Street. Uh, they're proposing a sign, uh, on North Franklin Street that would meet the, uh, H.P.'s, the requirements of the Historic Preservation District. As I indicated earlier, there are two trees on the site, uh, that will be removed. However, one's, uh, diseased and dying, the other's invasive species for our city over, so they would not have to replace those. They're proposing lighting on the building, uh, building lights to, uh, illuminate the parking lot. Landscaping, they would require some, probably one, maybe two street trees along West Williams Street that would not be in the site triangle. The building itself, as you can see, it's two stories. Uh, the north elevation would be brick. It would have a porch for the second floor condo. The, uh, east elevation would be brick on each side with fiber cement siding, would have a pitched roof. The west elevation would be fiber cement siding with some faux windows and pitched roof, and the north elevation would be fiber cement siding. That's where you'd have the, uh, stairwell to the second floor. You'd also have a garage, uh, on the first floor, and also there'd be an elevator next to the garage to access the second floor. Staff recommends approval with rezoning with one condition and the combined preliminary and final development plan with seven conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd just like to say that the Rice's have been excellent to work with. They have been through quite the process, uh, with just the building and the site and some of the remediation they've had to do there, uh, based on the old uses of that property. And then, of course, through our, uh, through our process, through HPC and design review, which is always, uh, uh, important, but can be, uh, difficult and a give and take here and there, but I think what we've arrived at is a really good solution that everybody's happy with at the end of the day, addresses Williams Street with a beautiful new building as opposed to the not beautiful building we have there now, uh, an unoccupied building with a mixed-use, uh, proposal that makes a lot of sense for our downtown and our community. Still preserve, manages to preserve the few off-street parking spaces that are there, which are rarity in and around downtown. But I just really appreciate the Rice's, uh, investment and potential investment. Already made investment, the City of Delaware, and, uh, can, wish you continued success. I hope it goes well through the rest of the process. So, we, we are in full endorsement of this proposal. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, the, uh, let's say the, whoever's got the apartments using the garage, um, those nine spots in the front, who's currently parking there? There's probably not a time I don't go by where every one of them's taken, right? All nine of them. How can we make sure that their customers now get to use those spots and not, you know, use those, you know, the paver on the side where the garage is type of thing?
I think that's definitely a question best suited to the applicants, but from my perspective, Commissioner, I think it doesn't help the building's been vacant for this long, and people in, so Delaware find parking spaces, as we know, and I think that's some of what's going on. I think they were, some of them have been rented out in the past with other owners. But when you have a new building, new ownership, particularly with an occupied second floor and a first-floor business, they'll be able to police those spaces, where it's a little difficult today.
Would we, would we allow in that district, you know, any type of signs that, just say, you know, uh...
I'm sure they'll have...
Whatever the sign is.
Private parking only signs, yeah.
The district on that parking.
Yeah, we would allow small instructional signs.
The only thing I look at is that, on the apartment upstairs, okay, is that in case of fire, the elevator is usually not usable. They tell you, do not use the elevator. So, they have one way in and one way out, and it's right over, it's right by the garage. My experience in downtown buildings have been, you've got to have two ways of getting out in case of a fire. This has one. That concerns me. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know why we tell most of them they have to have two, and now we have one.
Commissioner, it's a good point. Obviously, safety's paramount to us. This has been reviewed at least, uh, preliminarily by the building official and would, would be before any construction plans would be issued. Uh, it does, some of those rules in the state building code is what you're talking about, really, that depend upon the size of the building, the length of ingress and egress between, you know, where you are and where the stairwell is. This is actually a fairly small building. It's only seventy-one feet long.
It's seventy-one feet from the bedroom to that back escape.
Yeah.
And that's the only one there is.
Yeah, so if, if, if another egress, uh, would have to be provided for, that would be caught in our building plan review. As of now, we don't anticipate that, based on the state building code and our review of it. That's about the best answer I can give you.
There's a balcony up front. They can jump. Right there, see it?
That's, 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 that's a fine idea, except if, if it's a one-year-old child.
I know, I know.
Okay? No, I know what you're saying.
They could be rescued from that front balcony. If fires here, they could be rescued here.
But, but, you know, no one says, well, okay, we can get away with one, one fi, one, one exit point, because the fire truck can be there in such a time. I don't, you know, as I say, I, I, I know this is not totally a commercial building, but it is a commercial building below.
Again, there'd be firewalls between the uses that require...
But I, I also know that when we look at the building I was in, several owners have looked at it, that one of the big thing was, if it was going to be used either residential or whatever, they had to have at least two egress and ingress for, in case of fire. And our building was not much more than seventy-one foot long. So, I'm just wondering why the code changes so quickly?
I can get an answer from the building official for you to that, but it has passed that muster. To this point, we don't have final building plans yet that have been reviewed.
Well, okay, I, I understand that, but with the building plan or outbuilding plan, you look at this as one exit. I, I get concerned about safety. And, and, and where the code says yes or no, it's still a safety issue. Another, uh, stairway off that balcony, whether it be a drop-down ladder or something, is not a, would not hurt the looks of the building. Enough said.
Any other questions for staff? Uh, I'll invite the applicant to come up to the podium. If you could just state your name and address for the record when you reach the microphone, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jill Rice, and, um, my husband and I live at six Darlington Road here in Delaware, Ohio.
Jeff Rice.
Thank you very much. Uh, do you have anything that you'd like to add to staff's presentation?
Just, uh, you know, the, the city has been, been great to work with from our perspective as well, and, um, Lance and Diane have done a fantastic job in doing some history on the, on the property and summarizing, I think, where our goals are and the intent is. Just, I, I think one thing to point out is, our original goal, um, was to rehab the property there, and, uh, after we got into it with some contractors and, and, and some architects and everybody said, hey, look, there's, there's really nothing worth saving here. So, that's where the plan evolved from, from a smaller, you know, budget, um, to, to where it's at now. And so, in looking at that, um, just looking at the, the business pro forma, um, we had to kind of figure out how to offset, you know, going from a quarter million dollars to a million-dollar building. And so, um, one of the things we came up with was, you know, hey, we could add a second-story apartment, get it zoned as B-two, that could help us, you know, successfully complete, complete the project. So, in short, that's, that's kind of how this evolved, um, and, and I think just in addition to that, you do have some experience with fitness studios. If you want to talk about that, Jill?
Sure. Um, so prior, we've lived here in Delaware for nine years. I graduated from Kent State University with exercise science and, um, and got my master's in that, and, uh, I owned a, two fitness studios, one in Hudson, Ohio, and one in Fairlawn for about ten years. And then this is my hometown. I went to Big One at high school, we ended up moving back here, and so there's been a few years of gap years where I've been home raising four children, um, but I've always had the itch to get back into it. And so now that my, some of my children are, um, at the age where I feel comfortable stepping away a little bit more, um, when this building came up, uh, talking about, um, what caught my eye was the parking. You know, we live right on Darlington, a few blocks away, um, and so I was just excited about the fact that we can get a little bit more deeper involved here in Delaware and, um, and I can be a mom that is close to home. And then, when my mom said, yes, my mom is actually going to be our first tenant. She's moving from Galena, Ohio, so not far, but she's moving a little bit closer. I'm excited about that, and she's in great health now, but I would love to have her there as long as possible, so we decided to put, go ahead and put the elevator in, which I think will be great for even a future resident beyond her, so...
Okay. Uh, any questions for the applicant?
Other than the comment on the parking spaces, you know, whatever you have to do that's allowed under the district, because those spots are always...
It's funny that you mention that, because my, my son at dinner tonight, wasn't that? We're like, what do you think, you know, we're going to talk about? He's like, well, we need to get the parking figured out, because someone's always parking there. He's ten.
Always parking.
He's, you know, but I think during that process, you know, there'll be a process on that little corner where a lot of building equipment will need to be there, and so there is going to be a time period where those nine people are going to be dispersed. So, I'm thinking during that time, they're going to find their new favorite spot, and then we'll have to put some sort of sign, um, probably similar to what you see. I mean, I know, like, when I go to eighteen oh eight, there's little signs, you know, I don't know how we'll do it, but something like that, but I'm kind of, I think it will go smoother, being that there's going to be a time period, those people that are reoccurring parking there, they're going to have to find somewhere else to park.
And, and you bring up a good point there, too, because, um, a lot of people that park there are from the, during the day, um, work at the helpline right next door, and, and we've reached out to them, and they've reached out to us and said, hey, is it okay if we continue parking here? And we've said, absolutely no problem. We're going through a process right now with the city. At some point in time, that'll change, and, and we'll make you aware of it, so we've kind of addressed it locally as, as best we could. In addition to that, I have contacted a towing company, and, and the only reason we, we don't have it right now is they require a, uh, a, uh, a placard on the inside of the building as well, and since nobody's occupying that, you know, we didn't want to go through the effort of making up signs from the inside and outside at this point and, and doing any parking enforcement. I mowed the grass there, so it's a pain. I come down and it's full, you know, I've got to find a parking spot somewhere in the street normally for myself. But we think, well, well, you know, like Jill said, through that transition, it, it'll work itself out.
Of course, that being said, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't remark on our adopted parking plan, which does have a goal and objective to try to work with, uh, people that have private lots, uh, that it, where it may be conducive, particularly for after-hours...
Right.
...to help us share in the, the parking in downtown, so I think as a city, we'd, we'd be open to those conversations, obviously, to your parking, but we'd be open to that. We're, we're going through a process now of trying to figure out, how would you make a sign and, and, and make something coordinated that, that people can understand, you know, more than lot by lot for that sort of thing, but...
It's good to know, yeah.
You, you're right there, and after-hours, if you're not using it for exercise, you may be...
First Fridays are the...
For exercise, but, yeah, first Fridays are events, it's always a...
Right, right.
Always an issue.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for mentioning that.
So, how many employees do you, you, you anticipate?
I anticipate probably, um, starting out, probably around three of us, and probably no more than maybe seven or eight, maybe.
And where would they park?
Where would they park? They'll probably co, kind of combination on the day. I plan on doing private, some one-on-one fitness training, and then small classes as well, so probably kind of depending on the hour and the day will depend on, is it going to be okay for them to park there?
Okay, so, when you say small classes...
So, small classes, anywhere from, I'd say, four to the largest size will probably be ten that will fit in our larger room.
If we have ten, we have ten cars.
Right.
And you have four employees...
But I wouldn't have them all at the same time, you know, so it would be...
So, you'd have two anyways.
Um, could, could have two.
So, we've already maxed out the parking?
Yep.
And if it would ever turn, the upstairs was ever turned into another apartment besides your mother, okay, which is probably fine right now, they're going to require the garage plus one more spot.
Right, and, and there is an...
I'm just looking here and saying, there's not enough parking downtown now to start with in that area, and now we're going to add more.
Mm-huh.
You know, I, I just don't know, once again, once again, when we do, when we look at a new building, an office building, or whatever it is being built, one of the major things we look at is parking. Do they have enough parking to sustain this? Okay? You know, I, I, I know that, you know, but from my own experience of going downtown once in a while, to go to a business, even a parking lot, trying to find a parking spot is not necessarily the easiest thing to do. So, I'm just concerned that, you know, and, and maybe it's a good thing that we don't have enough parking, okay? Because that means everybody's busy. So, you know, but I'm just saying, I'm, you need to be concerned because of your business.
Sure.
Because if people can't park, they're not going to come.
Oh, exactly.
All right, we, we all know that.
I mean, I, I could, if, if, if I had to give up that parking, this kind of business would not work. I mean, we discussed that from right way, with it being a fitness studio. I actually had a building similar to this in Hudson, Ohio. Most people that pay to work out don't really like working out, or they do, but they want to learn more. You know, I mean, it, I kind of have a little bit of both. I have ones that want to learn more, and then I have ones that say, I've got to pay somebody, because I won't do it on my own. So, I need to make parking most convenient, because we're in Ohio, people don't want to walk more than ten steps, so I, you know, you know, I mean, that's the reality, so I was going, this was going, this project was going to end if I could not keep those nine cases. If we couldn't figure out how to build a building and maintain those spaces, then we would have moved on to another location.
And I think in addition to that, we're a little bit unique, because we sit a little bit on the west there, so there's parking in front of the Mason Building that is often not used, uh, right along there, those meter park, so we thought that, that's a good option for our trainers as well. We're within walking distance, um, so, so my wife would walk there, you know, as a trainer herself.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, I know that downtown is an area where parking is a problem, because the building you buy, you normally don't have parking, okay? I'd like if I build one out there and wherever, and I bought enough acres for parking. So, I under, I understand that. I, I guess I bring it up more of a concern for you than it is for the city, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, because it, that's, believe me, it, it, you know and I know that they'll, they'll go to Polaris and park twenty miles out to walk, because they can see the building, but you hear downtown Delaware, there's no parking. What you mean is, well, I can't park in front of the building.
Yeah.
How about parking in a parking lot and walking that distance all the way?
A lot of it, too, I think is a mindset. Yeah, I agree with you. I think people that, like, or I think we've come accustomed, because we live here in Delaware, and I hope to support, I hope, I hope this business becomes a local business, is what my goal is, right? To make it affordable for people that live within walking distance, biking distance, um, and driving distance, but like, it's a mindset, like, to me, it's not a big deal to walk two blocks to get to the restaurant I want to go to, because I really want to go to that restaurant, and two blocks is two blocks. So, I think, I think you brought up a good point, but, um, I'm hopeful to grab the locals that are here and used to, um, dealing with the parking, I guess, too.
So, I've got a question for staff. The number of parking spaces, is that determined by the size of the building or the type of business, or how does that relate to this, uh, this particular business?
Typically, it is, and in a B-three zoning district, you would traditionally have to provide off-street parking, just as if you were on the outskirts of town in a, you know, a big mall.
Based on square footage?
Uh, it's based on the use, and then the square footage of the use typically. Sometimes, depending on the use, it might be beds or whatever it is. But the proposal in this case is to change it to the downtown district, which, uh, essentially doesn't require any off-street parking, I think for some pretty obvious reasons. We're trying to build the street wall, we're trying to maximize building footprints and create energy and activity and vitality downtown. One of maybe the unintended consequences of that is that, uh, if we're successful like we are, you have, uh, a parking issue, um, may be, may be perceived a little bit more than reality, but obviously, the city's, uh, also working on some other things to help alleviate some of those parking concerns, and including, uh, the new app for parking and lots of things that we're working on, trying to work with private sector to share parking, like I just remarked, so. I think, I, I, to me, it's good land use planning to have, uh, a, a building without a bunch of out, off-street parking on it in our downtown core, and, uh, it's incumbent upon all of us to kind of figure out the parking. And as we talked about on our conference of steering plan, uh, steering committee, uh, as you know, uh, the nature of cars and travel is changing significantly, uh, today, and may change quite a bit in the future, uh, to the point where, uh, you know, shared vehicles and drop-off zones are more important than parking. But nobody knows the answer to that question yet, uh, but some people that are a lot smarter than I, thinking about that, have certainly thought about this. So, that's a long-winded answer to you, but the, but the proposal here is to change it to the downtown district, and so these parking spaces would actually not be required under that district.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, at this time, I'll open this conversation up to the public, if there's any member of the public this evening who wishes to speak on this particular case, this is your opportunity. All right? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the Planning Commission for action or further discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve two zero one nine dash one seven two seven rezoning with staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Proll?
Second.
Second by Mr. Badger?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
My concern is that second entrance or the second fire escape. I'll vote yes, but I hope that they look at that and take serious look in safety-wise to find the second exit. So, yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve two zero one nine dash one seven two eight combined preliminary and final development plan with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Proll?
Second.
Second by Mr. Badger?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
With the same concern, yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, first reading for this will be by council?
Should be Monday twelfth.
It's coming Monday.
We're scheduling a public hearing for, um, August twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Okay. All right, good luck.
All right, thank you guys, very much.
All right, moving on to item B under regular business. Could the clerk please read that into the roll, to the record?
Item B, Coughlin's Crossing, case one, two thousand nineteen dash fifteen seventy-eight. A request by Delaware Development Plan LTD for a development text amendment to sub-areas two, five, and six of Coughlin's Crossing on approximately eighty acres located east of US twenty-three, west of Stratford Road, north of Meeker Way, and south of Elliott Estates subdivision and Zoned A-one PMU. Case two, two thousand nineteen dash fifteen seventy-nine, a request by Delaware Development Plan LTD for approval of an amended preliminary development plan to sub-areas two, five, and six of Coughlin's Crossing on approximately eighty acres located east of US twenty-three, west of Stratford Road, north of Meeker Way, and south of Elliott Estates subdivision and Zoned A-one PMU.
Yeah, give you some history on this site. Uh, back in November two thousand sixteen, Planning Commission City Council approved the rezoning, preliminary development plan, cooperative plan amendment, uh, preliminary subdivision plan for this site. In, uh, two thousand seventeen, approved the final development plan for phase one, which was the infrastructure. That was the construction of the roads and utilities and the like, and, uh, the majority of that has been completed. Uh, in September of last year, um, developer came and presented a concept plan in front of us for sub-areas five and six to move the, uh, the open space, uh, within five from just south of Hawthorne Way down to Meeker Way, and that was, uh, favor, favorably received by the Planning Commission. Uh, now they're in front of us to, uh, advance that project and also revise, uh, SubArea Two on this development. Uh, this is the entire site. SubArea Two is located along Stratford Road. SubArea Five is located north of Meeker Way, frontin' US twenty-three. Sub-area six is, uh, also on US twenty-three. It's the northern end, north of, uh, where Hawthorne Boulevard will be extended. Uh, that construction's, uh, starting as we speak. This is also the sub-areas, uh, sub-area two's in the yellow, sub-area five in the orange, and sub-area six is in, uh, uh, blue in this area. And this is the overall plan, uh, for these three sub-areas that they're proposing preliminary development plans for. And this just gives you an idea how they're interrelated and located, uh, on the site. Uh, the development tax re, uh, revisions to sub-area two would include consolidating sub-area two A and two B into just, uh, sub-area two. Also, it would, uh, request that one hundred ninety-four multifamily, uh, dwelling units be constructed in sub-area two with no commercial or, and or office units fronting Stratford Road. It's also requesting that the minimum one-bedroom apartments be a minimum seven, seven hundred ninety square feet. The two-bedrooms to be minimum eleven hundred square feet, and the carriage units be five hundred and seventy square feet. And this is the, uh, site plan for, uh, sub-area two and the apartments. It's, it's, uh, north is to the top of the screen. Engineering, this is preliminary development plan for a final development plan. They'd have to submit a full set of, uh, final, uh, construction drawings. Access to this site would be a full access point from Coughlin's Way just north of Meeker Way into the site and a full access curb cut on Stratford Road as originally conceived in the approval. Uh, pedestrian connectivity, uh, a bike path, uh, is in the process of being installed along, uh, the west side of Stratford Road. And also the interconnection of the sidewalks within the development would connect to the bike path and the like. As you can see, this, uh, sub-area two's linear in configuration. Uh, they would be proposing one hundred ninety-four apartment units in fourteen buildings. Uh, there would be four two-unit buildings with sixteen dwelling units facing, uh, Stratford Way. It'd be a two-story. Uh, they're proposing, uh, three-story buildings, five three-story buildings containing twenty-four units uh, just west of, uh, Stratford Road would be in this area. And also they're proposing five two-story units containing two dwelling units. Those would be the carriage units, and those actually would be, the garages on the site would have a second floor, uh, apartment on it. The subject development would have three hundred sixty-four parking spaces, uh, throughout the site. Fifty of those parking spaces would be within the five garages scattered throughout the site. That's almost two, uh, spaces per unit. Uh, there'd be a clubhouse with a pool located in the southern portion of the site. The mailbox area would be just north of that. Uh, the nor, the most, northernmost portion of the site would be a dumpster. That area, that would be screened, uh, per code requirements. From a tree removal perspective and replacement, uh, they did an extensive tree survey when this was approved. And it's, uh, they couldn't replace all the trees, so they're paying us, uh, a requirement per acre as they develop. Uh, this site, uh, would require just, uh, above forty-four thousand dollars on the almost ten-acre site. Uh, landscaping and screening, they'd have to provide, uh, the screening required per the development text along Stratford Road. Some of that's been installed. They'd require street trees, uh, shade trees, interior parking lot, landscaping and foundation landscaping. Preliminary plan appears to meet a lot of those requirements. However, the final development plan would have to be more detailed. Open space, if you remember, there is a Stratford Commons open space about an acre in the northern, western portion of the site as originally conceived. It would have amenities and be the main open space for this development. Uh, the lighting plan, the future lighting plan would have to meet, uh, achieve compliance with the development text, and all the signage would have to be approved per the development text. And actually, staff would recommend a comprehensive sign plan, uh, for the development. These are the elevations they're proposing with materials. Uh, this is our two-unit development that would face Stratford Road. Uh, the first floor would be mainly stone. The second floor would be fiber cement siding. You can see you have a hip roof of gables and acupulas. That'd be the frontage along Stratford Road. Uh, they're just above the thirty-five, minimum, the thirty-five-foot high, so there'd be a variance required for that. This is the three-story structures that would be located, uh, west of the two-story buildings. And again, the, the design is very similar and complementary. The first floor would be stone. Second floor would be a mix of fiber cement siding and stone. And the third floor would be fiber cement siding, and again, you'd have a hip roof of gables and the like. Uh, this is the carriage unit. Uh, and you'd have the first floor being stone, the second floor being fiber cement siding. There'd be a cupola on that, on that building. And this is the clubhouse that would, uh, be complimentary to the rest of the apartments in the same stone and fiber cement siding, uh, with the cupola on that. The next portion of the request is, uh, sub-areas five and six is development text changes to that. Five, a, as again, five is along, uh, US twenty-three and six is along US twenty-three. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan for five and six, a preliminary plan. They're moving the open space to this area. It was originally up, uh, just south of where Hawthorne Boulevard would be. There are also requests in, uh, setback ver, uh, reductions along interior collector roads in sub-area six. Uh, internal side yard setbacks in five and six. Uh, minimum lot areas in six, five, and six. Uh, lot width and frontage, the per-approved final development plan in six also. If you remember, in six, we approved the car wash in this area. And I think, uh, a lot of these variances are to help fit those such developments on the frontage along twenty-three that, uh, wasn't initially envisioned, uh, three years ago when this, uh, development text was approved. This is, uh, section five preliminary development plan. There, uh, there's, this is two, these are two parcels here, and the third parcel would be the reserve area. Uh, the two parcels are about, um, I think they're about eight acres in size. Uh, the access to this would be two full access cuts from, uh, Coughlin Way in this area. They're showing a proposed access on, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard and Meeker Way. At this time, uh, those access points wouldn't be permitted per our code for the development text. Pedestrian connectivity, there would be a sidewalk along the eastern side of, uh, Coughlin Way and a bike path on the north side of Hawthorne Way for the, uh, approved, uh, development text. These two buildings, the northern two buildings would be about twenty-one thousand square feet each, uh, in this area. There'd be a drive-through on the, potential drive-through on the north and south elevations of each building. Uh, there'd be three hundred seventy-three parking spaces surrounding, uh, the two retail office buildings. Uh, the southernmost building would be approximately eight thousand square feet with a hundred thirty-seven parking spaces and likely be a restaurant-type use in this area. The tree removal on this development, uh, when they moved the open space from this area to the, uh, proposed location, they took out a lot of trees in this area, about a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars worth. So the per-acre requirement on this sub-area only would be almost twenty-three thousand an acre. It's almost eight and a half, just above eight and a half acres. Again, they'd have to meet all the landscaping requirements, uh, along US twenty-three and street trees, shade trees and the like, foundation trees. Uh, the lighting and landscaping, or the lighting and signage would have to, uh, achieve compliance with the development text, and the buildings would also have to meet the minimum standards, uh, within the development text. Sub-area six, located north of sub-area five on US twenty-three, uh, they're, they're proposing a single building just south of the car wash that was recently approved. It's about a seventeen thousand square foot building. They would have, uh, two access points from Coughlin Lane. The first northernmost would be shared with the, uh, with the car wash, and the southern one would be a right-in, right-out only location. Pedestrian connectivity, there is a bike path along the western side, or eastern side of Coughlin Lane that would extend west in this area and ultimately cross US twenty-three. The site configuration has about a hundred fifty parking spaces for this, uh, proposal. There would be a potential drive-through on the northern, uh, uh, portion of the building. Uh, tree replacement would be the typical almost twelve thousand dollars for this site. The landscaping would, requirements would be similar to, uh, to, uh, sub-area six. Same with the lighting and signage requirements. And this is their typical building. Uh, this is, actually comes from the development text, the building they submitted during that. This, this would match that with stone ends and, uh, fiber cement, uh, siding with the interior. It's, uh, pitched roof at the end and some gables on both ends of the, uh, development. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the development text amendment with twelve conditions and the preliminary development plans for sub-areas two, five, and six with thirty-two conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think it's just important to point out that three years ago, when this project started, uh, the commercial market was in a different place than it is today, and it certainly seems like it's where it's going. We do think that this, uh, makes some sense. Obviously, the, the, uh, changes in it, sub-areas five and six, uh, had a concept review before you in the past. And I think these proposals are in keeping with that concept review, which was generally well-received by this commission at any rate. Sub-area two is probably the point of a little more discussion. It certainly was for us as staff, working with the applicant through a number of iterations of really design. Uh, there were always, uh, mixed-use buildings and apartments, uh, contemplated certainly two-B and some other sections of this site. Long two-A, that's probably the biggest change, where there were the twenty-four, uh, townhomes in attached configuration primarily. Uh, this is, you know, a change from that. However, we think with the two-story to then three-story and then the sub-areas that are kind of ghosted out here before you get to five and six, uh, you'll still have that layered approach. We know we have, uh, an outstanding builder in Romanelli and Hughes, uh, brought to the table who does super-high-quality work, and I think the, uh, working with them, looking at the renderings, are certainly, uh, doing that and proposing that in this case as well. From a design perspective and looking at Stratford Road, it will look different than the townhomes originally, but I still think you'll get that, I don't know how we're, we've, we've came up with little funny words with sort of this Pennsylvania Dutch-style building, uh, across from what are single-family homes primarily along Stratford Road, and then back into the more intense portions of this site. From a land use and land planning standpoint, this site, and I think probably several of our commercial sites in town, will probably have to start looking at introducing some additional residential within those sites. Good models for that around the country and certainly in central Ohio, Bridge Park in Dublin, the Worthington Shopping Center, Bethel Road Center, they're just all over the place. And part of that is to try to, uh, have a mixture of use and a, and a clientele, residential clientele that can help support some of the ancillary services and stuff. From my perspective, uh, as always, it's much more about design than it is anything else. And I think we've, uh, the proposal by and large achieves, uh, the design goals that the development originally set out in, in this area. It's still just between those two ponds. Some of the changes are necessitated. You'll recall the entrance off of Coughlin's Way had to achieve compliance with the fire department to be able to get in and out of there. The, the preliminary plan had a, uh, a much shorter and much more curvilinear entrance closer down to Meeker Way. So that's been adjusted so that, so that that condition is met in this case. And then that had to result in some adjustments to the overall site plan as well. Uh, but because we recognize, the applicant recognized that this is a change, we wanted to go through the text amendment process and the formal, uh, development plan approval process, obviously give any of the, the community an opportunity to make comments and, uh, come before the commission council. So I appreciate the applicant working with us up to this point. It's been, uh, several months in development, at least with staff, back and forth on the overall proposal. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. So I, I just point out for you, the applicant did hold a public meeting, uh, I believe, private-public meeting. Private-public. Privately convened public meeting out, uh, in the area, I think at the Historical Society to review some and receive some comments and feedback from the community. So just point that out.
I would have liked to seen an overlay of, of what was originally proposed. And I know in here we've got some text, you know, but I would have liked to seen, uh, what was originally gonna fit in there. I think it would have been nice to see that at this point. Uh, you know, exactly how the layout of, of sub-area, I think it's two, down on Stratford Road would have been. Uh, I thought that up there on twenty-three was going to be more commercial.
From what it is, what's approved today to what they're proposing?
Yeah, I would have liked to, you're showing me that now.
We have it.
But, you know, it would have been nice to have it before the meeting.
Oh.
So we could actually see what kind of change is going on density-wise, traffic-wise, parking-wise, number of vehicles. Because if, if going back and, and I know I'm old, my memory's not real good. I thought Stratford Road was gonna have some small shops there with some, uh, uh, residential over them and some houses in there, uh, and that seemed to have gone. And I, I know things change.
Yeah.
Okay? But we don't necessarily have to change.
Right.
Okay? So I, I would like to seen that.
Yeah.
Because I, I think I could make a better balance of this thing had I seen that before the meeting. Okay?
Appreciate that. Apologize for that, Commissioner, we're obviously...
Well, it's hard for me to vote one way or the other without seeing that because I don't keep all that paperwork. I know that some people do, I don't.
Yeah, it would, appreciate that. We, when we're talking about sub-area two as two-A and two-B, this is the existing approved preliminary. Lance is pointing out what is sub-area two-A and those attached townhomes and then two-B, which was, as you say, uh, mixed-use, which actually allowed, um, some apartments on the first floor, apartments on the second floor. Had a height requirement of thirty-five feet, so you could, you could get three stories in there as well. Uh, didn't have a cap on, number of units had minimum square footage requirements and that sort of thing. There were three preliminary buildings shown at the time.
I mean, that, that, I, what's, the, the, the density difference in what was in this? And what we're getting today? Okay? And in this original proposal, how many units were we talking about, housing units?
There were twenty-four in sub-area A along Stratford.
Uh-huh.
And then sub-area two-B, and I know this is gonna be an unsatisfactory answer to you, uh, could have had, at the time, with three buildings doing the square footage calculation, would have had, uh, approximately forty units on the upper story at two stories. If you, if they built three, it would have had, you know, eighty. And then an undetermined number on the ground floor to be determined with final development plan, but to be de minimis to retail.
So a total of?
I would ask, my best estimate.
Estimate.
Okay? Uh, based on the existing preliminary plan, is about a hundred.
And now we have how many proposed today?
Hundred ninety-four.
So we have ninety-four plus?
Correct.
And we went ballistic over, up there at, uh, Hop Road because of the increase that he wanted, which was less than what this is.
On this particular sub-area, that's true. From our perspective and the way we look at it as staff, we look at it from the sub-area perspective, but also from the overall mixed-use development perspective. And I think it would be very instructive to also obviously hear from the applicant in their presentation with respect to why they want to make the changes and to address your question as well.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to get the numbers here.
Right, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
So we can, you know, we can move forward because...
They, they may have a different estimate. That's my best estimate for you based on this plan. It could be somewhere between a hundred. If you go up to three stories, it'd be, you know.
Okay.
More than that. Hundred, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred thirty. It just depends on how you want to estimate.
I'm, I'm big on, on what we've done before compared to what we're doing today.
Yeah.
And trying to use the same reasoning from there.
Yeah.
Over here, and it seems that it doesn't, not everybody wants to hear about it, but go ahead.
Yeah, it's definitely a proposed change, and that's why it's before.
Other questions for staff?
Yeah, um...
Yeah, um... With the new proposal, though you're bringing in, to me, it, it's the Stratford Road. You know, if we're gonna increase in a, you know, the volume on Stratford Road, how can we actually move it to Meeker Way or Twenty-three? In the original proposals off of Hawthorne, Hawthorne goes into just, let's say, a big-box type of area. It doesn't connect all the way through to, to SubArea Two. And I know we gotta have multiple entrances, but can that multiple entrance actually be on that west side of Two, coming down off of Hawthorne and eliminate, and each, eliminate the access on Stratford? Meaning can you change the configuration a little bit by shifting this, you know, the, the Two-A, Two-B together and just bringing it up a little bit more so that you've got an, an access on Meeker and Twenty-three and none on Stratford? So I think really that, to me, the biggest issue is, you know, yeah, you had twenty-four with the potential, I had sixty-four to eighty-four in the origi- in the original one as far as housing goes, but, you know, that was without a third store. But now you're talking about a daily type of traffic pattern with the apartment buildings. And at a hundred ninety-four units, that's, you know, potential of almost four hundred spots, let's say three hundred, three hundred and fifty cars, based on our numbers before, eliminating somehow getting it off of Stratford. That's really just my, you know, initial thought.
It's, it's an interesting thought, Commissioner. I think that the way it sits today, the idea, and I think it was well-received, it was approved, was to put sort of a main drive in between SubArea Two and the SubArea to the north, and then have multiple connections to, to Coughlin, the Spine Road. Under this proposal, that would still remain, and that, the, the idea was to keep those, those elements intact, but could it be done such that there is no entrance off Stratford and there are multiple entrances off of, uh, Coughlin? Uh, maybe, maybe, just an emergency access perhaps off of Stratford Road as well if that's the concern. We took the physical infrastructure, even though it's not done, being constructed yet, as kind of a given pattern and a desire to create that kind of pedestrian, it's car, but also pedestrian way up from Stratford Road. But if that is a concern, it could, it could be amended. Uh, we'd prob- we'd have to, certainly Apka would have to relook at the, the site plan, and we'd wanna get engineering and the, uh, fire department involved in that conversation.
The other part was my thought is, you know, now that we're eliminate, you know, potentially eliminating any of those little retail shops on Two, then that frontage on Stratford is really just more of a walking, it's not a walking to a retail shop. If there's a walking to the retail shops, it's going to be into those new, you know, to the, to the west there.
And we certainly could continue connections from the pedestrian connection standpoint. So if you're walking, you could still walk to what'll hopefully be, um, some retail shops or even into the, the linear parkland area.
My other comment is on the, uh, you know, the new proposal, you've got an entrance off of Coughlin Way. Is that a, is that gonna be a three-way stop? Is that, is, so to me, since you've got a roundabout at Hawthorne with the potential of bringing Hawthorne down into, let's say, this type of area, but just to keep the flow, the movement of the traffic going, could that actually be a single roundabout, or is that an always stop? Is, if you're adding a lot of volume on cars, particularly in the morning, let's say, everybody's going off to work, eight, nine o'clock in the morning, you know, you're gonna have so much attempt to get off of, or get onto Coughlin, which is why I didn't want the car, you know, see the cars coming out to Stratford, 'cause then it's just gonna be Zoom Stratford, Meeker as fast as you can get type of thing.
I don't have any concerns with the proposed intersections off of Coughlin Lane. Um, Coughlin, Coughlin Lane itself does have a, uh, two-way left turn lane in the middle to accommodate turning movements off of Coughlin Lane into...
Okay.
Any proposed access points, but the traffic study, uh, was, was pretty detailed in, in determining those intersection points and the need for turn lanes. I believe maybe that intersection at the southwest corner of SubArea Two, uh, exiting, um, onto Coughlin Lane may have a, a left and right turn lane within that side street to accommodate that, so no, no concerns from my point, but good, good, good question.
Any other questions for staff?
I know it's just preliminary, but have you talked about the amount of green space differences between the original? 'Cause it seems like just visually we're losing some green space, obviously along Twenty-three type of area i- in particular, but, uh, do we know if there's a large change on the percent of green space or anything like that, you know?
I, I don't think we have the percentage handy. I will say, obviously, there's a change, uh, along Twenty-three, as you say. However, there was an outlot proposed at Meeker and Coughlin.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're effectively switching, switching that open space. So you would have developable lot along Twenty-three and now open space, retention, detention at Meeker. So for me, that's approximately equal. I think the bigger change is in, again, Two, changing that entrance up Meeker Way really prohibited having even longer linear green space that you see in the approved preliminary plan, uh, because of where that drive comes in and then how the drives work within a site, no matter what the, what the uses were gonna be there. However, I do think the applicant's still done a good job of continuing, picking up the linear green space where they can and continuing along that, that vista to the end of the Stone Barn, um, the Jane Barn, you know, that would be remaining as well, uh, as best they can, uh, and fit this development on the site. I don't have a percentage change for you, but it is less in this version than it was in the, in the current approved preliminary, from that perspective. Long Stratford is the same, same amount of setback, a same amount of green space, so that's, that's equal.
You said along Stratford, it's the exact same amount of setback...
The same where the detention ponds were preliminarily, uh, sited is, is consistent with the preliminary plan, and then the preservation of the wooded area at the north end of SubArea Two would still remain.
Still remains today.
Still remains today, under today's approved plan and under the proposed plan, it would still remain.
But this, this was changed, that could change too.
What's that?
With all this changing here, the rest could change too.
From the perspective of the woods and the ponds along Stratford, what I'm telling you is, it's the same as today's preliminary plan.
Well, they have to remain because they are, are water retention.
The ponds, the woods are reserve area to be put in permanent easement. So they could propose a change to those, they're not proposing a change to that.
Not now.
No, not now, I mean, it could...
We didn't, we didn't expect this change...
I agree.
When we approved the first one.
I understand, yeah.
Because we didn't want that many apartments to start with.
I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Keep going.
Yeah. On the, uh, staff recommendations, numbers, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve, can you explain to me, um, you know, men, if, talking about areas Five and Six, so amend it, let's say, amend SubArea Six to permit minimum lot area to be approved with the final development print, plan, as permitted in SubArea Five instead of the one-point-five acre lot minimums. Ten, eleven, and twelve, what's the, uh, kind of intent there? Don't we usually just do that?
We, we done that in other sections.
Yeah.
For this, you know, initially I...
But it wasn't in the development text?
It was in the development text as a specific number instead of as approved by a final development plan.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
All right. Part of this is a little bit lessons learned going through the blue-sky development process in addition to no doubt required drop lanes and the other improvements that you see going on that obviously create some traffic snarls out there while they're putting it in. Some of the internal setbacks, we'll, we'll still have the landscape in between there, and we still have, confident we have enough room for that, um, and the landscape along US Twenty-three, but it's just some of those internal calculated setbacks and then lot minimums, changing just a bit.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I wasn't missing something from...
No, you're not, you're, you're correct.
Um, the other question I had was on, uh, page thirty-one in the development text as far as the permitted uses in the SubArea Two. We're still, if this goes through as just a, a residential apartment building type of thing, we're still allowing permitted for office, retail, and so forth. Does that be permitted or should that just be conditional? Or why would it still be...
I think I would recommend that it be permitted just because we have a plan and a zoning text in place. If this goes through, they build it, the, the apartments may not be there forever and the, and the markets may change, and they may wanna do some more of the mixed-use within that area, and that's why we left it permitted in Two, it's permitted today in Two-B.
Right.
So that's why we just carry it forward. Now, we could eliminate it, and if it changes, then they have to come back through the text amendment process at that point in time.
Okay.
Just remember that as a planned mixed-use overlay, the text and the plan go together. I mean, they're, and the development, and the, uh, design elements that you see within the buildings and elevations as well. So they, they go together as a package as opposed to traditional developments, as a zoning and then development plan and plating, basically.
Okay. So again, just, just for further clarification, the new units are the proposed units that are directly off Stratford Road are the two-level units, correct?
Correct.
And they are not over the height restriction, but the three-level units that are further away from Stratford Road, they do exceed the high limit? Is it just the cupola that exceeds?
So I'd like to have the applicant address that too, but, uh, to the best of our ability to calculate based on the preliminary elevations, the two-story units in, in all respects except where the middle, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Roof gets higher and even more pitched, which is generally...
Yeah.
Higher quality and that sort of thing. Uh, that section is approximately two feet above the thirty-five, uh, as proposed today.
That's fairly minimized.
On the three-story unit, then, it's, you're adding a story, and so instead of about thirty-seven feet tall, it's about forty-seven feet tall, 'cause you're adding another story.
Yeah.
And again, the roof lines are pitched and it, it's sort of, the roof lines do the same thing. So the middle element, we're, we're taking the highest element.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the text tells us to do. But the elements adjacent to that are then, you know, a little bit lower.
Okay.
Terms of the hi- I mean, most, a lot of that is roof. The roof is almost kind of a story tall. I mean, I suppose you could envision one that's flat, but I can't envision a flat roof that would fulfill the design requirements of the text, either.
No.
That's, again, they work together.
What, what do you, what, what's the city think the effect will be going to apartments instead of commercial-type property on Hawthorne, coming in from Liberty Street? Uh, you know, I mean, we already get complaints over there about people cutting through, and now we're talking about a hundred and ninety-four units, one to two cars apiece, you know, Twenty-three, a lot of people are coming up Liberty Street just to, you know, because they're coming from Dublin or someplace like that. Have you thought about what impact we're gonna put on that neighborhood and how long before they come in and want traffic calming devices?
Yeah.
Have we thought about that?
I think we have thought about that from the staff perspective. We don't see this change as, and it, we may disagree with you and, and everybody else, but we don't see this change from that perspective being significant. We do see the change, uh, to allow more residential uses on this site, giving the opportunity for the commercial development and the service and the restaurant development on this site, which these people were primarily used, and they're right there if approved, to, to give that a better chance of success than as conceived today.
Yeah.
So in terms of a trip, someone comes home, they go to their unit, they get out of their car, and then they walk to a successful restaurant that's right there as opposed to a lot that's vacant, and it can't be filled because there's no residents right there, and it, or, you know, vice versa. There's no residential allowed here, or maybe you have a restaurant out front, but then all the trips are coming to the site. I don't know from an engineer's perspective if you have any...
No, no additional thoughts?
Additional comments on that.
Okay.
We also have taken some steps as a community, as a city, and, and the mayor knows this, with respect to traffic calming, just citywide, it's been an issue, not just in this area of the community. I know you're aware of that, Commissioner. Um, and the engineering department has put together a, uh, guidelines for traffic calming that City Council has reviewed, and I believe, uh, the Parking and Safety Committee has reviewed as well. So we're, we're taking steps on just traffic calming in general, uh, in terms of having a policy and a process to address some of those issues as they may come up. 'Cause sometimes there are unintended consequences, as I think you're, you're pointing out, in things that we can't foresee.
I just, my, you know, I'd say, I, 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 I just, my concern is that, you know, I understand, first of all, I live, okay? I knew what was there, I knew what was zoned, I knew what was gonna happen, okay? So shame on me, but that's the way it was, and I have no problem with that. Uh, but I get concerned because I see all the stuff we hear about people cutting through and going to, to Walmart. That's not nearly as many cars as what we're talking about here. And if we add commercial to that, and we do build some big boxes, and maybe some restaurants and all the things we'd like to have there, we're gonna have even more. Now, as a planning commission, I guess I should say, ain't my problem, okay? But I think it is. I think we have to look at the, the total picture of this thing and say, do we have something in process, a plan in process, that will handle this problem, which may not arise, but I think we have to look at that, and is it fair to shove this over on an existing neighborhood? You know, that's my concern. Okay, you, you see where I'm coming from?
Sure.
Be no different than if it was anybody else's neighborhood.
Yeah.
We have to look at that. It's not mine, so I guess I should say, ain't my problem. It is my problem because we have to look at that as a planning commission. And City Council has to look at it knowing that it's going to come back to them, and they're gonna hear about it. So why not solve it now? So I guess my question is, is Hawthorne traffic light, that entrance, that important? Solve that problem by not having that, that problem goes away. And just have the entrance off Twenty-three there where the shopping center is, it's already set up for it. I'll just throw it out. It would solve, long-term, installs all that problem in there.
Uh, my perspective as a planner, Commissioner, is that I think, you know, those lights have been established with the preliminary regardless of this proposed change. It makes sense to have additional access points and allow the traffic to essentially disperse itself to safe intersections along US Twenty-three. Uh, we're kidding ourselves if we think that if there is a fifty thousand cars on US Twenty-three anyway a day coming through. I appreciate the, the whole cut-through, um, traffic calming conundrum. We did discuss that in the initial development of this and the initial zoning text of this development, and that's what we arrived at, is those three lots on US Twenty-three after the best engineering reviews that, you know, we can have, and we have an outstanding engineering staff, rely upon them to provide that expertise. I think it's an interesting point by Commissioner Prowl, and interested to hear the, the, the rest of the conversation about, you know, access on Stratford, in particular to this sub-area, that is, that is something that we hadn't contemplated as staff or the applicant up to this point, um, you know, essentially cutting the access off the Stratford Road.
Well, I think at this time I'll invite the applicant to come forward. If you could just state your name and your address when you read the microphone? Thank you.
Connie Kleema with Delaware Development Plan Limited, here to discuss our application. What we're handing out is, is, um, basically an overview of the site itself and then actual views of the proposed developments for Area Two, Five, and Six. Um, Lance, would you mind putting...
I got you.
No, I mean, would you mind putting back on the screen what our original design approval was? I think, after the hearing, I understand you haven't been in the process... I think after the hearing, I understand you haven't been in the process, as we've been working with the city staff, to know what we had and where we are. So what I want to point out now, first, before I talk about the proposal, is what we haven't changed from our original approvals. The whole idea of this development, as you recall, was to make this an extension of downtown Delaware, the town. And it is part of Delaware, and the town doesn't survive without people. People that live there, not just driving there, but actually live there. So that was the spirit of this whole design from the very beginning, and we do not want to change that. What we're trying to do is make certain that it is achieved. When I've been out, basically, talking to people that want to be here, and there wasn't anything there yet, what they're saying is, yeah, I want the restaurants there, I want to work there, I want to have retail there, but we need people there. At the very beginning of this whole exercise, when we were going through this, I remember Dave Ethlin said, "It would be a home run if you could get your residential in there at the very beginning, so you could basically have a population that's going to enjoy what you have planned." We started looking for somebody that would actually achieve that. It's hard to find a developer that's going to build, in an area that we call 2A and 2B, a small section here along Stratford, that doesn't have exposure of the US 23 signs out saying, "Come into our development." Somebody that's willing and understands Delaware enough to know that Stratford is a gem, and that being here and doing quality architecture will be a winner. I went to several of the people that I've worked with as developers, that I thought is pretty high-end, and they all said, "No." First of all, you can't build the 24 houses here and then be so close to this commercial, which you want to keep. And I said, "Yes, I want to keep the mixed juices," which this is mixed juice here also, as you know. I went to several developers, and said, "Well, would you just do apartment-type here, and maybe some office and retail mix?" We never had office and retail along 23. It was only on the interior side, which was called 2B. Couldn't find anyone to do that either, because that was too small of an experiment for them to even begin. Lo and behold, Romanelli and Hughes step up to the plate, and they go, "We know this area. We saw the architectural requirements, we can do it." But what we want to do, after we study the site, is, instead of having a development here that looks totally different from this, let's combine this, have a uniform-type architecture, make these more scaled to what you had proposed to those across the street in here. No more than two stories, beautiful roof lines, beautiful architecture, stone, vertical battened siding, everything that we had wanted, it had in the text. And then we will do the apartments here, keep them here, keep this as was, keep this as was, and work within the defined space that you have. That's what we're here today to request. I was thrilled, and I've been thrilled. Now, our mixture of units here was always apartments, and maybe a potential, like, office or retail space. If you recall, when we went through the Zoom thing, and you walked through, this is the entry coming in up on Stratford. You came through this, and then you came to the big green area, where people can play, walk, do whatever. And then you came up through here, and we had, we saw restaurants, people sitting outside. That has not changed. So on this plan, at least in this area, the only thing that's changed is 2A and 2B are one. And the developer we hope to be there is Romanelli and Hughes. We never had a maximum or minimum number of units in our text. The way the text read was that units basically would be a certain square footage, and there was, however you designed your site, you designed it accordingly. Romanelli and Hughes came up with a great idea of having carriage houses, which were a smaller unit, which is why we wanted to amend the text on those. But at the same time, there was no maximum or minimum number of units. So we don't even know what that would be, and if Dave is correct in his estimation, he had estimated maybe in the prior plan, 100 here, but then there was also these units, which were doubles or singles, another 25. So 125 may have been around the number that you could have easily done. Romanelli and Hughes, if you look at the drawings that come up with the design, that I believe is very attractive. And the additional units, or the number of people that would be there, will only, to me, help establish what's going to happen here. Because this won't happen until this does. Now, when you come up to here, what have we changed? As we proposed earlier on, we've taken what had been an area for storm here and put it here. So when you come in here, you're surrounded by waterway, waterway, open green space. You can pull into the residential, or you can keep going, and then go into the mixed juices, restaurants, residential, and also anything else. We may not ever have a big box, it may just be a lot of mixed juices all along here, but that's our plan. We're not trying to change it, we're not trying to do something and flip our ideas. This idea, I've been working on for too long to change now, it's going to happen. We want it to happen. Up here, what had happened is, is we had some things here, as far as minimum and no minimums here. We said, "Let's just make this uniform." So most of those text changes for 5 and 6 are to make what we're permitted up here and here, size-wise, setback-wise, the same. So that's how those particular amendments came to you. I guess what I, as I listen, and you're talking about access, as we know, we studied access a lot. When we met with people in Stratford, originally, you know, we had talked about multiple accesses and that. When we talked about houses, they didn't want driveways. We have not changed any of that, and we kept it so that that is all green space, that's all walkway, that's all waterway, that's all bikeway. It's still the same, nothing has changed. We have not diminished our green space whatsoever in 2A or 2B or the surrounding area. It's all the same. So this access here, we actually, because it's there, are required to give up part of our property and widen Stratford Road. Now, if that were taken away, we wouldn't have to do that. It's not an alternative we've ever considered. I don't really think I like the idea, especially at this point, because we have utilities and everything designed, and our construction plans are ready to go forward to put that access in. But that access is really not going to be used by too many people, except those people along Stratford, or those people living in those apartments that want to come in this way. If I'm coming from 23, I'm probably going to come down Meeker and pull over and come in here anyway. Now, always, this area came up, and a person could come over to Hawthorne and go in and out. That's, these multiple accesses, as Dave explained also, have always been available for this site. This particular area up here, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed here, except for those minimums and maximums of setbacks, that we would like to be uniform. We're very excited about the fact that we've got this lot down here, which potentially will be a restaurant. That's what we hope, I can't promise it. But we're hoping that becomes a restaurant, because we think that would be a great location for the restaurant. But ultimately, our design, our anticipation, is that we have a quality developer, Romanelli and Hughes, build what are the residential component of this project to feed commercial, mixed-use areas of our design.
I mean, obviously, my concern really actually is still those apartments, with the amount of traffic. I would say most, if I was living in there, I would use Stratford, because it's a right-on Stratford, right-on Meeker. And we all are going to do the rolling stops and right-on right. Yeah, I would like to, that's why I would like to say, somehow to push the traffic to Hawthorne, whether it's Hawthorne to Meeker, or Hawthorne to Hawthorne, or somehow get an entrance, another potential way for residents to get out without using Stratford. Just because it, you know, it's a small road. It is not, you know, meant for 200 and, you know, 400 cars, or harboring cars, it's going to be. And like I said, I think people will use it, because it's a right and a right. You know, you're going to do a right out, you're not going to have to stop on Hawthorne or anything like that, try to turn left. That's my opinion on that, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
John, did you want to go through these pictures you handed out on the screen, just maybe for the benefit of everybody?
Yeah, I'm John Oney with Architectural Alliance, architect for the project, and with you several times before in the southern gateway. But just generally, I know we brought an animation before and showed you views of the area, and we wanted to just do this again, not in animation, but show you the views. The views you see there are going to be A1 and A2, which is SubArea 6, which is the first retail building that we're planning to build now. Areas, the picture A3 will be, as you go down Meeker, that will be the entrance that you see to Cogway and the pons that you see there. A4 will be a view of what is now proposed with the Romanelli and Hughes residential. As you begin to approach that, compared to what we originally proposed, A5 is the entrance that we have, where the brick pavers, and the same as we had before. And A6 is as you go down that lane back to the preserve and the common areas you would do. So we just wanted to show you that what we presented in the development text and the conceptual examples that we showed you with the architecture and the overall feel of the development, we feel is still consistent with what we did before. So I can move this mouse?
You gotta use the wheel on it. The top.
Here.
I'm using the wheel.
Right there, like that.
Okay. So the first view is A1. If you were looking at the SubArea 6 next to the Blue Sky Car Wash that is approved, this would be approaching from the north. What you would see in SubArea 6, on the first multi-tenant building that we're proposing, the next view is, if you're approaching from the south, that same first building that we're proposing, again, with the architecture that is consistent with what we conceptually showed you before, and what we're presenting to be the first building, retail, that we build. As you move to Meeker Way and the main entrance, what you'll see is the two ponds. From the residential development that we set in Area 2 now, the first building there that you'll see will be the clubhouse. All of that is consistent, I think, with what we presented it for in the feel of the space. As you move on down to Stratford, what we presented before, again, we haven't illustrated this with the little stream, we didn't, but you still have the stream, the walkways. None of that has changed, and we presented before two-story elements, with the 24 homes that were there. The scale and size and materials, and all the walkways and pedestrians are consistent with what we brought before you before. Also, again, we mentioned the overall green space of this area is the same, will not be changed with the development. I know we do have more units than maybe that could have been done, but we don't have the mixed-use commercials. So again, the overall area of buildings and green area is consistent with what we brought to you before. As you go to the entrance we have off of Stratford, we said we changed the pavement. This would be a brick paver, again, a pedestrian walking area, also vehicular access, with buildings flanking each side, again, consistent with, I think, the materials and the pathway through that space that we said before. As you move to the end of that space, again, and back to the preserve and the commons, that all is unchanged, and we still anticipate the residential use there and the mixed use coming with developments further to the west, to make that a common area. And you see the James Barn at the end, which was still a terminus and feature point. All that is unchanged and keeping what we presented before. So we just wanted to, again, connect the threads and the dots from what we presented before. Again, we did an animation, this time it's the, it's six views of that animation that we thought were the important views to show you.
Do you have, I know it's just preliminary, do you have an idea as far as what kind of amenities might be programmed within those units? And I thought I saw clubhouse.
Absolutely. Hi, Jim Olin with Romanelli and Hughes, 148 West Rock Road in Westerville. So we were brought into this development probably about six months ago. We're excited, obviously. Vince Romanelli is a huge fan of Delaware City, we have Terra Alta, so we know the market well. We know the need for housing here in the area. And one of our biggest focuses was, is that in talking with Dave, was a real focus on elevations, on the look of the community itself. So the question on height, we didn't focus on height, we focused on the looks of the buildings. And this is probably version six, as we worked through this, to make sure that we focused on that vista. As you came down Stratford, we wanted to make sure that you saw some elevation change. We added the carriage units, if you can, I hope we can still pull back those. I hope we can still get to the carriage units. But, so we added the carriage units to show some elevation change in the houses themselves. But it was a real big focus, just from a look standpoint, and that's what our objective was to get. As far as inside, obviously, there's going to be the pool, the clubhouse, fireplace, a gathering area for the residents. There's also the green space that's behind, that's been preserved, behind our apartments. And we're still working in terms of ideas, and in terms of whether we want to do that with low-line things, whether it be, you know, we have pickleball, or something along those lines, something small that residents can use. So we're still working on those concepts for the green space, but for us, it's a pool and a clubhouse, and a gathering area for residents.
Would it typically require onsite maintenance, like someone there 24/7?
I can't answer that question.
So just taking a step back, could I get your address for the record? I know you said your name, but no words.
I apologize. 49 East 3rd Street, Columbus, Ohio.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Do we have a sign-in sheet for those who wish to speak this evening? And I guess, has everybody who wishes to speak this evening signed the sign-up sheet? That's probably a good question to ask as well.
I don't think I saw anybody on the sign-up sheet out there, but I'm not sure that means there aren't people here that don't want to...
Okay. Is there, if there's no one on the sign-in sheet, I'll just, there's no names? Oh, okay, that's fine.
I like Jeannie's coming.
She was going to speak.
Well, absolutely. So at this time, I'm going to open up this case for public comment. If you're here this evening and you wish to speak on this particular case, please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
I didn't sign in.
That's okay. Nobody did. So you're all on an equal playing field.
I'm Jeannie Ball, 1989 Stratford Road. I'm going to be very brief. I certainly appreciate this commission. Your concerns that you have brought up this evening are some of the concerns we're thinking about, mainly the density and the traffic that will be coming on Stratford Road. So I appreciate everything everybody said here this evening. I'm a little hard of hearing, and the mics weren't turned up, so I couldn't hear a lot of what was going on. If there's any chance to turn up the volume somehow for next meeting, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate that feedback. Is there anybody else here this evening that would like to speak on this case?
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Gannade, 170 Hall Drive. My concern is, I would like to see a limit of how many residents will be in this, because you're looking at this project, but you also have the project over on Curve Road, the developer that's coming in. There's so many communities being built right now, that a lot of the traffic from there is now coming down Stratford. from there is now coming down Stratford. It goes up Hall Drive. It's not just this project that's an issue. It's all of the development that's going on in Delaware right now. I appreciate your comment and your comment about the traffic. It's a concern. Coming out of Meeker Way onto 23 right now, there's no warning light on 23 that the traffic light is about to change. And if you drive down 23, the skid marks are incredible, where especially the trucks are trying to stop in time. So, I would like to see a limit instead of saying, well, we don't know how many apartments will be, because no one's even addressed the fact of A, of, I'm sorry, 1A and 1B with the long-term care and the nursing home. The assisted living, you're gonna talk about more vehicles, even not just the apartments, the carriage buildings, the attached, unattached homes. Traffic is a concern to me. All the kids, you're gonna have buses coming through again. I just wish that somehow you would address how many residents are going to be, and it's established and it's, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here this evening that wish to speak on this case? Okay. So, I'll bring you back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mr. Chairman, just an answer to the one question.
Yes.
With respect to the limit on number of units. What's, what's approved today, we have, you know, we're estimating how many units could have been built. What's proposed right now, there would be a limit placed in the text that it could only be 194 dwelling units on what's now, what would then be sub area two. So, there would be an answer to your question, place a limit on it. Now, that may be higher than the limit that you want, but in terms of a limit in the text that would put a limit on it. Just wanna answer that.
But, that's 194, make sure I understand this thing, I'm getting a little confused here. It's 194 units down on, off Stratford Road, correct? And originally, it was set up for 40 houses, single families. Am I right now?
Twenty-four on Stratford, right on Stratford.
Yeah.
In the one sub area.
Mm-hmm.
Section of the sub area. And then, it could have been two or three stories of residential in the other sub area, plus some ground floor units, depending upon, they showed originally three buildings. Those preliminary, they could have come in with one, they could have come in with four, they could have come in with these three. And so, thus, that's why I say I had to estimate best I can, because we had unit sizes, square footage. We had proposed square footage of the buildings. I'm just dividing there to come up with my estimate of units. But, there wasn't a cap, to the lady's point, there wasn't a cap on the number of units in that sub area. Along Stratford, there was a cap of 24 units along Stratford.
Twenty-four units, and now we're at 194. Now, we're at 194. Is that correct?
And I don't know if I took the same sub area where it was 24 and divided the new sub area for the units just along Stratford, I don't know, John or Connie, maybe you know if it went from 24 to, whatever that number is right along Stratford. I just don't know it off the top of my head. But in terms of the overall sub area, there was a cap, there wasn't a cap for the overall sub area. This would place a cap on it.
Okay, now, up on 23, are there apartments up there?
No.
There are none on 23?
No, not in the two sub areas, not in the two sub areas we're talking.
So, not in the proposed and the future plans, future phases, that's not changing?
Not in sub area five or six, no.
See, I guess, I guess from what I understood, and once again, I'm old, my memory's not too accurate. But, Stratford Road was going to have some small shops, possibly some apartments above it, and some residential houses. That was what was, I understood the proposal was. The shops are gone, the houses are gone, and now we're straight apartments. Is that, am I understanding this correct? And if I'm wrong, it's a good time to jump out and tell me I'm wrong.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But behind those row there, there was a proposed three buildings with no cap as to what those three buildings would be, whether they would be three stories, they would be apartments, but we had no idea how many.
Correct.
And that's what bothers me, because there's someplace along in that line, and I'm gonna tell you the truth, my memory's a lot better than what I claim, I had no idea that we were going to go with a three-story, could go three stories back there with that much on it. I don't think that's what was really brought out completely clearly at that point.
I think the intent preliminarily was two-story buildings there.
But now, we're saying they could have been.
Thirty-five, yes, correct.
No one said at the time, well, they could be three stories.
With a 35-foot height limit, that's, you know, you could go up to 35 feet.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, I just, I don't know, I just sometimes think it's amazing when it comes back, all of a sudden, there was more there than what we thought there was there. Maybe I'm just the only one that thought that. But I knew there were gonna be two stories in behind that. I knew there's gonna be, you know, some nice little buildings down in front and some small shops and apartments above it, and I thought, gee, this is gonna be great.
Well, I just wanna be clear, Commissioner, because we wrote staff reports and presented, and the applicant could say what they want as well. But I, from my perspective, based on what your remarks just now, those three buildings weren't small buildings. They were 20,000-plus square foot buildings each, so that they're not tiny buildings as currently approved preliminarily.
I'm just, I'm not criticizing.
I just wanna be clear with that, and I think that was crystal clear upfront.
I'm not criticizing, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
I get it.
What was going on, okay? That's all I'm.
I just think it's easy to lose, I know it's easy, we do this every day, and it's easy sometimes for us to lose a sense of scale. So, it's, I know with the public and even with the commission, it's easy to lose a sense of scale. When you look at something, you know, this big and it's 80 acres, some of it can seem small, some of it can seem large, it kinda depends on your perspective. But these were 21,000 and 25,000 square foot buildings, I believe, in two-story configuration as preliminarily proposed, but could be by the text up 35 feet, which is, could be three-story. And then, the units out front. From my perspective, as you know, and you've heard me say this for 15, almost 16 years now, we don't have the ability to necessarily control whether a unit is rented or owner-occupied or condominium or land dominium or any other fashion like that. We could control the design, we could control the access points, we could control density, we could control those sorts of things. But in terms of someone building a single-family home that then it's a rental unit as opposed to an owner-occupied unit, we'd still have the ability as a city to control those things. So, those units along Stratford could have been, probably would have been condominiumized or could have been in an ownership condition.
Can I ask one more question?
Just from that perspective.
The density in this against the density on the Halk Road apartments that are just being built out there right now, are these densities the same or is there one more than less in the other? Remember? You may not remember, Dave. I mean, I, you got so much paperwork coming in front of you.
Honestly, we have so much development going on, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think these are, and it depends, again, not to open a density can of worms, but it depends on the acreage you wanna calculate towards that density, which was a huge discussion out of Halk Road, as you know. If you calculate it as spread out overall over the 80 acres, which is certainly the way I think it was positioned with respect to, mention was made to the potential assisted living or the north piece tonight, and this piece, the change in density from that perspective is really de minimis. If you look, just zoom in and look just at this sub area, it is getting potentially fairly significantly more dense than what was proposed. However, that also depends on how many units you estimate could have gone into 2B. We know, we know 2A, 24. That part we know, was capped. So, for me, the density isn't as important as the design, the access, the traffic, these issues that have been raised tonight. And then, looking at it, especially in a mixed-use development overall, I think that's the most important thing to me in this case. You were gonna have a density of retail and houses in this 80 acres today. I mean, you're gonna have an intense, dense development, that was always the idea. With appropriately designed open spaces and appropriate transitions between Stratford Road and then up to the more auto-oriented development along 23, I still, in my estimation, that's still consistent with the proposal today, although it's a change, definitely a change.
So, David, you brought up the size of those buildings behind what was approved on Long Stratford. You said it was 21,000 to 25,000 square feet.
Yeah.
What was approved? Do we have any idea of what the total square foot was approved? And how does that compare to what is being proposed today?
It's a good question, Commissioner.
Because I think it would help me to understand.
Okay.
And give me a better concept of what the density would be like. And, Brian, just looking at 194 apartments.
Yeah.
But what does that?
I believe the total square footage of those three buildings was around 88,000 square feet in total. Anybody else remember, John? I'm gonna look through my notes and may confirm that with you, plus the 24 units. So, I can attempt to do that on the fly tonight, or obviously, we can come back with that information too. I had it here earlier today.
You're at, just a little over 82,000.
Okay, that's close.
Square feet. What was approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Prelimarily, those three buildings.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, any idea what is before us tonight?
That plus the 24 houses.
Well, it would be that plus the 24 houses from before, in terms of total square footage. I don't know what the 24 houses were. I think they were about 1,500, 1,800 square feet each, so, you know, we can do some quick math for you, but.
I don't know if anyone else finds that that would be helpful for them.
Yeah, maybe another 40, so about 120. Did I do that right?
Johnson's calculations, and with, we knew when we did those particular ones that we didn't know what the final design would be, which is why it was preliminary course. But with the existing footprints of those buildings and the sizes plus the 24, it would be approximately 140 units as drawn in that preliminary plan.
I think in terms of the square footage, which was your question, best estimate I could give you tonight would be the, 2A and 2B would be about 120, 121,000 square feet of building. Today, under the current proposal, I don't know what the total square feet of building is, because we're focused on the, a cap on the total number of units.
Yeah.
John, do you know the total square footage of the, or Jim? Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to come back to you with that.
Only because I was reading that the proposed development text described 790 square feet to 1,100 square foot units, so. With even the smallest one, 570 or something.
And for me, it's not, it's not as much the square footage, because when I looked at those three retail, I mean, thankfully, they weren't concrete, else that, you know, so much concrete we would be placing in it, that the newer one at least feels spread out a bit more, it's not as congested. To me, it's still where to move the traffic out of the apartments and not under Stratford, particularly like the northern corner, the northeast section, all those apartments. I mean, they're gonna go up to Stratford, right? They're not gonna come all the way down, you know, you're blocked in on, on all those apartments on the northern side type of thing, right? There's no, there's no other way but to go, unless you're gonna drive past every single one of those and come out on Coglin. So, to me, it's still more the traffic flow than anything else. Because with the retail space, if you remember, the retail space had, as I'm looking at it, had access going further west into the main plaza type of thing. And that's no longer there, right? So, now, all the traffic is either gonna have to go.
Well, in the next sub area, that would, as it stands today, without any modification, that would still be the plan.
Right.
Up into that next sub area and then to.
Then disperse.
Coglin's.
Correct.
Way.
Yeah.
But it could, it could be that if you wanted to, if the suggestion is to eliminate that access point or perhaps make it emergency-only, I'm just, I haven't had the benefit of running this past fire department, I'm just presupposing that they might want emergency access, emergency-only access. That probably could be done, accommodated.
So, another barricades up there, but I did take a liberty of driving up through there. And it did seem to me that it would be a huge loss.
You're not the only one.
That you have your roads already built in there. Now is the time to somehow construct the proposals that you bring before in a manner that would allow roads to help disperse all the traffic. Because I don't think you can do anything with the roads at this point.
Are you talking about actually giving up the access on Stratford and having it have the two area fed by the internal roads?
Just what you have already in there now, how is that, how are those roads able to provide dispersing the traffic and creating as least amount of congestion as possible? Because you've got the roads there now, it seems to me, bringing this proposal to us, maybe it's time to look at, okay, we've got the roads, and how do we build around the roads to help disperse the traffic?
This is what I know, just briefly, about what we can accommodate or what we would consider after we've talked with engineering and also with traffic, that having the access on the Stratford was almost a requirement before for, to make certain we have the sufficient access. We could ask them to consider emergency access only on the Stratford, and I'm sure people in Stratford would like that too. At the same time, we know that we have the southern access off Coglin, Coglin Lane, and internally, we will have additional access up to the roundabout when the other pieces are developed. So, it would be something that, if in fact, we came back and said, okay, we're giving up that access, we'll have an emergency lane only, therefore, it's very people-oriented, traffic will be coming in off Coglin at this time, and then when the central quads develop, we'll have to incorporate another third access or secondary access there. We can definitely consider that. If we do, we obviously would want to then be able to not have to widen Stratford Road and do all the things that we had to be committed to as far as doing our turn lanes and everything, because we won't have that access. Yeah, which is part of the text, which we required that in.
You know, I don't know, Jonathan, whether that would, it's just hard here, sitting here tonight, whether that would require probably cracking up with the traffic study again and relooking at all of that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's, what's to be discussed is not feasible, it certainly probably is. However, I will note that, as was discussed, the Stratford Road improvements are approved and are being made, you know, to give more appropriate access to Sub Area Two by widening Stratford Road, adding a turn lane to Stratford to get traffic in and out of Sub Area Two. Also, there's some additional benefit to the Stratford Road improvements by correcting a substandard curve in the alignment as you go north on Stratford through Sub Area Two and also making improvements to the road that will be the primary access to Sub Area One. One labeled there as 1A and 1B Stratford North. So, I think if we're gonna give serious thought to eliminating an access from Stratford into Sub Area Two, we would have to look at the broader traffic study and how that would result in shifting all traffic from Sub Area Two into Coglin Lane, which would then either go out to Meeker or to Hawthorne and to the roundabout, as opposed to some distribution between Stratford and Coglin Lane. So, that could be looked at if that's the wish of the commission or the developer, for sure. But there are some other benefits from improving Stratford besides just the access to Sub Area Two. One, getting a more standard width road, for one thing.
So, just two things, I'm, one.
One note.
I'm actually in favor of the access to Stratford because of those reasons, and because not everybody's going to use it. Certainly, there'll be some, but there will be, hopefully, an equal dispersion of where people will go. But I would just wanna ask the question to the commission members and then to the applicant. Says not to exceed 194, do we have to have 194 units? Or are we wanting to, some discussions of, for the third story, I heard a lot of aesthetic qualities and I, I'm not, I'm not. Or are we wanting to some discussions of, uh, for the third story, I heard a lot of aesthetic qualities and I, I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer, I'm not all those things, and I understand and can empathize with that, but does it have to have the third story buildings? Because when we see those, there's a lot of apartments in those, uh, three-story buildings. Can it be all two-story? And I understand it creates some flatness and some of those things, but does it have to max out to one ninety-four? I think is an appropriate question, especially in lieu of the concerns with Stratford Road. Sorry, yes, sorry, so, it, it's a rhetorical question, I suppose.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you've been very patient, I appreciate it, so I'd like to invite you up to the podium if you can just state your name and address. No, not too behind you, the gentleman behind you. You've been patient enough, you've met the, you've met the minimum requirement.
John Main, one hundred Wagner Way. I was, worked for ODOT for thirty-one years, Delaware Township Trustee for fifteen. Mr. Halder brings up a very important point, we've been around here a long time, Mr. Halder. And we've seen these traffic problems, uh, and, and there's a big difference between residential and commercial. Because they're not all coming and going same time. Those, those guys have to get to work, and they're gonna come out of there, and they gotta, they gotta afford to live there, right? So, I live on Wagner Way and, uh, for some reason or other, goes from nowhere to nowhere, and it's just quadrupled the traffic. The speed and the traffic. Same way with Hall Drive. One, a couple of things I would like to request of the city, along with all this extra traffic we're getting here, is that Hall Drive, you think about a signal, there's two signals for, uh, Walmart, there's none for Hall Drive, why don't they come out that way? You know, when, 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 uh, the township was in charge of that, well, if we ever were, uh, it went right straight to Walmart. You know, Kroger's over here, and, and there was a drive, and it, and it connected with your development and ours at, at that time. Now, that was all taken out and done, and then we put two lights in, which is another delay on twenty-three, time delay. Then, then, uh, it just, we, we need a lot of things done with traffic, movement of traffic. Like coordination of the signals, man, huh, we coordinated one time through town, and that all got thrown somewhere. ODOT did that. But we need that twenty-three corridor coordinated. Even if you had to drive twenty mile an hour, you'd go a lot faster, and you're going now, you know, there wouldn't be the pileup. So, Mr. Halder had a good, I, I was so glad to hear him, try to deal with the traffic. Because they're coming around, they're gonna come around Wagner Way, they're gonna come around Hall Drive, they're not getting, you know, they gotta go somewhere, and they will. But if we, you know, if it, if those tra, uh, signals are coordinated, Hall Drive goes, Hawthorne goes, you know, they all, they all move out. And, uh, you know, like now, we didn't used to worry about the traffic going across, uh, Hall Drive into, uh, not London Road, uh-
Liberty Road.
Liberty. Well, try and get out of there. I mean, you can't, the, the brush has grown up so much, that you, you're out into traffic before, you know, that's another thing. But with increased traffic, we need to, sight distance problems taken care of too, but that doesn't have anything to do with this development. I'm sure glad to hear Mr. Halder deal with the traffic, that, that, we're always behind the eight ball in traffic, you know that. I mean, we're always behind where we need to be. We, now, you're gonna get a hundred and ninety houses thrown on one, this is, I've heard there are whole housing development coming at you at one time. So that's traffic. Yeah. Thank you, I'm, hope I didn't bore you with that one.
Some of us did get a, an email from somebody who lived on Wagner Way. So I drove up and down there three times last night trying to see what this particular person was talking about, and then I drove through barriers and went into Coughlin to see what they were talking about too. I guess some of the property on Wagner, Wagner Way was bought up and it's now rented.
Uh, yeah, Jim, Jim bought that house on the corner, and he wants to, he, well, no, he wants access to Hall Drive. Now, he, he says only, that's only parking for his employees. But his employees shouldn't have tags in the window where we repaired them, that's what you, that's what you see if you look, so.
Well, even closer down to Stratford, there was another house, I think, that was bought up and it's now rented.
Probably is.
I don't remember them now.
Yeah, there's a lot of new people there, and they all, well, because of this problem.
Right.
Very difficult. It's, it's hard for me to get out of Hall Drive now, because they come out, off those apartments up that hill, there's no sight distance, you know, they just, they just, they're all through there, and that-
Yeah.
I know you're not gonna put speed bumps.
Well, we're hoping that with the traffic light at Hawthorne, it may slow things down there at Hall Drive also.
I'd like to see one at Hall Drive, because that takes a lot of traffic.
Well, we're gonna try one first at Hawthorne, just how that works. Possibly making the Hall Drive on the other side of the road, right in, right out only.
Yeah, I know that.
So, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of different things-
So they go down and make the turnaround like they do at the, the trailer court. Uh, can we coordinate those signals? I don't know why we have-
That's a good question, they, they are coordinated currently, from, um, south down to, um, Meeker, north up through the Delaware Plaza and up to, uh, forty-two. Those are all coordinated currently. This project, adding the one at Hawthorne, will also be coordinated with those and making some other improvements to the corridors as well, to timing. Excuse me?
I've never come through there where they, where you could, what speed are they set at?
Whatever the design, I don't know what the design speed is, probably, the speed limit's fifty- The speed limit's fifty-five, uh, the design speed's probably sixty.
They work at three-thirty in the morning, that's all I know.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chairman, um, just a point of order, if, if the commission did receive emails, and, yeah, I think it's good form to make sure you forward those to us as well, so we can make them as part of the record. I hadn't received anything up to this point, so I just wanna make, just go on record as saying, if you receive those, please forward them on to us, so we can make them part of the record, and then everybody can read the same communication as well. Maybe you all received the same communication, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know if I did, I'll have to check. Okay. All right. Do we have any more questions?
Well, I was gonna say, there was a question on like, uh, twenty-three, are, would ODOT put warning lights up to say, you know, uh, red light on Meeker coming up, or anything like that?
Those out.
Because they took a lot of those out.
Used to be all through the corridor.
So, you know, they're, back in the day, there often was, prepared to stop when flashing signage, and there are still some of those out there as you're going north and approach, and south approaching Delaware Plaza. ODOT adds, is actually no longer in favor of those, they are against those signs now.
Okay.
Part of the reason is, perhaps, uh, they actually cause more problems, people speed up when they see that, it just starts flashing, so. So those are no longer approved by ODOT to go in on any new projects, I believe ODOT's even taken some of those out. Uh, the one approaching Delaware Plaza just north of Hawthorne is actually going to come down as part of this project, as part of a city slash ODOT approval. So, those just aren't standard anymore, there are still signs that just say, like, a signal ahead sign that will still be used.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
I, you know, I, I just listened to everybody here, and it's just my, my proposal here is that, I think we, we need to find out if something can be done about that entrance there on Stratford Road, okay? So I, you know, if, if, if staff could work on that and bring it, I'd like to see it brought back, so we can decide what can happen there. Okay, I, I think that's important. But I understand there's some problems with that, and don't get me wrong, because then there's one entrance in and one entrance out. And if we use that for emergency only, my experience has been, as low as it is, that not everybody really follows that rule, okay? It's like, no left turn, okay? I guess there's a special license out there, so, I, I think we need to look at that, okay? Because once again, they've gotta have more than one entrance in there, I, I think, that just makes common sense, a case of fire, or, or an accident up here, and they've gotta get somebody in here, an emergency squad in there. I, so I know that we need to do something, I just, I don't know what to do. Okay, I'll be honest with you.
I'm with you, I'm, I agree, I don't know what to do.
Everybody has said here, we don't know what to do. I'd like to see a little bit more thought given that, maybe there is an easy solution, maybe there's not, I don't know. I, I, you know, I don't mean to be picky on this, okay? But that's the proposal I would like to see, okay? Because the rest of it's kind of, you know, but what, what's the density, well, how do you figure the density gonna be, what was it before, what could it be now? You know, I, I think that's a, you know, it's ki- kind of a tough thing to look at. Uh, you know, whether they could go to a two-story, instead of a three-story, I don't know. There's a cost involved in all of this thing, and has to be a return on it, that's just business. But I think we oughta look at that, I, I think we oughta go a little bit farther into this thing, so we can come up with a proposal that's good. Just that's, I throw that out.
So, if you follow that train of thought as a commission, just so I'm clear, uh, on my marching orders, you might table the cases tonight to have us and the applicant go back and look at potentially eliminating the public full access off of Stratford Road as the, as the primary thing we wanna look at. Probably gonna have to look at the traffic study a little bit, and then the improvements on Stratford Road, you know, may not be warranted at that point. It may be, you know, I don't know, we rely upon our, our engineers, the traffic engineers, take a look at that stuff. But to, to Connie's point, if you eliminate that, you may not have to do that, and the trade-off would be, you'd still have that curve in Stratford Road. It's just, just the planner's explanation, not the engineer's explanation. But that would be the direction back to us as staff, and then maybe ask the applicant to take a look at two-story versus three-story, and maybe come back with some information as to, may, maybe they can do that, or maybe they can have a few more two-story in there, or maybe there's an economic explanation that you'd be open to listening to. A fair summary of, at least what my marching-
Or with some western connection, possibly to Hawthorne, yes.
Western connection to Hawthorne?
Because it's not a direct connection currently.
It, in the current approved, you can go into the shopping plaza.
Yeah.
Right? Right, and then you could hit the big box, whether it gets there or not, and then work your way towards either Coughlin or Hawthorne.
Right.
In the proposal, it's just a stub with no, yeah, it just stops.
I think that's the way the diagram appears, because it's ghosted in the middle. What that means to me, as your regulator, is that the two sub areas in between Coughlin's and this sub area are still, are what they, what they are today. So that those accesses would still occur. At least, at least one access up through the main roundabout, and then the one now closer to Meeker Way. So you'd still have two ways to disperse traffic at least, and then through the big box sub area up to the, uh, the Wendy's Light, for lack of a better description.
And the point being, you know, if this was a residential-
You still wanna see that through the other suburbs.
If this was a residential and we were just dealing with phases, we would say, gee, you've gotta connect Peach Blow and Cheshire, and we wanna see that connector all the way through, whether you're building it now or later. It was always in phases type of thing.
So see the sub, see those other two sub areas as the over, part of the overall plan.
So we can make sure that-
Got it.
Yes.
Yeah, if, if, if that does work out that way, then that makes this exit down Stratford Road a little bit less more important. Because then we knew had two ways, but I, I don't know-
I think that's the intent, and I think those sub areas are not proposed for change, but to see it on one-
Yeah.
Revised preliminaries, we see the overall, is I think the direction I'm getting, that makes sense.
If I could just offer one more piece of, uh, engineering advice, and that is that with the currently approved preliminary development plan for Sub Area Two, which conceivably sounds like is a lower density than what's being proposed this evening, that access point off Stratford was required, based on the traffic study and our analysis and so forth. So, I can't imagine a scenario where increasing the density would somehow not require that access point without perhaps some other major changes, such as the fact that Meeker and Coughlin Lane intersection is just a stop sign on Coughlin Lane, no stop on Meeker. Um, so you're sending all that traffic to that point instead of some out to Stratford, which has a three-way stop at Stratford and Meeker, which, uh, conceivably, in my judgment, better accommodates the traffic coming out of Sub Area Two onto, via Stratford to make a right turn on the Meeker at a three-way stop. So I think, in, in my judgment, um, with the proposed change, you would still need the access off Stratford, at least it would be my preference.
But if, if that sub area down here had a direct connection to Hawthorne.
Yeah, and that would still happen here through-
Wouldn't that solve the problem?
That would still happen regardless through Sub Area Four.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't show it.
It's not depicted there because this case doesn't address those sub areas, so it's just-
So they would have the two accesses in and out, okay? I don't see why Stratford would become-
I, I would still require that regardless of the change.
Okay.
Across, you know, it might meander, it might meander through a development on Sub Area Four to get to the roundabout, either, either way.
There's only gonna be a hundred people there, and now we're at Sub Area Four.
And you're putting more people in there, so you need the access even more.
Do we have any idea at all what would be going in, um, one A or one B?
Just what is permitted on the zoning text. We don't have anybody interested in that area right now.
You've been going at this for what, three years now?
Probably five.
Five years.
Yes.
You know, and I know you've just gotten the roads in, and the lights are up, and it's looking nice, and the level from the twenty-three has come down.
Yes.
You know, I just, I, I feel bad, you've got one thing in there so far, and I, I just, I guess I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, I'm too.
Yeah, I bet you are.
I'm nervous because, um, these, all the questions and discussions, I, I understand, they've just come on your lap today, but this has been two or three years of working with engineering, traffic studies, and finding out where access points are best and where they're not. And determining at the access point on Stratford was best, also required that we were going to have to do those improvements. We were taking out the curb, and also that helped contemplate the access future for one A and one B. So, what's happened is, is when you start just taking out a piece and saying, how do we make this better, you have to consider the whole. And so at this point in the design, if you go back to what the traffic engineers discussing and what's been gone on here, is currently, there's a, an access that goes into the residential of Stratford, and that's the only access that goes into that particular thing. But that has access also from Coughlin Way, from Meeker, and also meanders as we've talked to go to Hawthorne. So, three access points at that point, so not everyone's going to be going out on Stratford in the morning, not everyone's gonna go out on Meeker in the morning, they're gonna be dispersed. So, that, that plan is there. Now, we're willing to, to look at other things if it means that we get something approved, but at the same time, when we start talking then about densities, we think to ourselves, I know the densities and how they were measured, because I wrote the text with John. The idea was that we did not have a maximum number of units, that depending on how skilled you were with design, if it looked quality, you could put in as many units as you could fit, as long as you had proper setbacks to do that. What we did here is, we had, during setbacks is required, we're not asking for variances. And what Roman Elliott Hughes has designed a development that is complementary to the site, doesn't have big, three big twenty-seven thousand square foot buildings, but more petite sized buildings, and are at a scale that we really contemplated originally, except without the tall looks that, um, we're looking at. So, density wise, going from whether it's a hundred and forty or a hundred and twenty-five, thirty to a hundred and ninety-four, uh, I started thinking about what that really means, it only, it doesn't look massive on the site. The design, if you look at the pictures, I think they're elegant, what it does is it does more for the rest of the development. Having that number of people on this site, if they're accommodated properly through traffic, which all the studies and all the engineers seem to think that they are, if, if they are accommodated in design, there's not much changed, except that there's gonna be fifty, forty, fifty more units. And oh, when you look at this eighty acre site, you don't have apartments anyplace else, that's it. Except for in the mixed use areas, which are already accommodated parking wise, et cetera. So, I would like you to consider that, because I don't want Roman Elliott Hughes to go away. And I also want this development to make it, and so I'm, I'm throwing that out. I'm willing to look at access points, I'm willing to say, we'll do whatever we can to accommodate traffic, if you will also help accommodate our density, because we need that. if you will also help accommodate our density, because we need that.
But a variance will be required because of the height.
I understand, but hopefully we'll be able to get that explained because of the looks and that type of thing. Hopefully they'll understand that.
So you're saying there's no way we're going to get rid of that entrance on Stratford Road? Is that, I mean-
Yeah, I'm probably, my, my judgment is that without making some other modifications somewhere else, I think it's unlikely because previous analysis required it, even at the lower density. So I just can't imagine that a higher density, we could somehow easily remove it.
Without major changes-
Without changes somewhere else, yeah. I would rather see a portion of that traffic go to the three-way stop at Meeker and Stratford than some increased percentage going to Meeker and Coughlin.
I, I just, I just see the majority of that traffic, or a lot of the people who are living in here, and once again, what the heck do I know, are coming from, from, from south of here, okay? And in my own mind, I'm coming up 23, I hit Stratford Road, and boom, I'm gone, okay? Boom, I get the entrance in there, I'm home. If not, I got to come up and, and, and once again, it's not that much, it's not any farther. It's probably the same, but it's just a perception.
Yeah, I can see, you know, folks traveling north of 23 would make that first right on Stratford-
We see it all over, we see it all over town.
At Turkey Hill, yeah.
You know, and, and that's just the way we are. We're somehow looking for the shortest way there, the fastest way.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that point. I think that was probably some of the reasoning that went in behind the Stratford widening to accommodate that traffic.
I moved this town, there were thirteen thousand people, there's a few more now. So, you know, with the same major roads. So it, it's a, it's a problem all over the, it's a good problem, I guess, right?
Sure.
Ruth?
Yes.
And I, and I would mention, I'm, I'm okay with the density in itself. To me, it's not the density because of the, like I said, it feels more spread out actually than the, you know, the currently approved type of thing. So for me, it's not the density.
Well, I mean, I think, I'd just offer staff, not that Connie and her team may not like this, but we could take another month to confirm what we're all saying in the middle of a meeting right here with respect to what you've asked us to do as a commission, and look and see, is there a way that the Stratford access could be managed differently? Maybe it's still there as emergency, maybe it's right in, right out. Maybe everybody comes back in a month and goes, here's all the calculations of data that reconfirm where we were with this current preliminary, which you don't have in front of you tonight, I appreciate that. That shows that it still needs to be a full access point there, as to Jonathan's point. I just, it's kind of hard sitting here right now at quarter till nine to-
Absolutely.
Fulfill all your requests. It's going to take a little bit more time for us. I, I think they'd be willing to do that.
I would like to see that. And then if there's nothing we can do, then I guess we have to move forward and see what we want to do with it. You know, I mean, that's just my feeling. The density, I, I never liked density, I'm sorry, I like lower densities. But it, once again, the density doesn't seem to be way out of line, okay? It's just that that traffic on Stratford Road, try to, if we can eliminate some of that, maybe, as you say, we can. The three-story, maybe a two-story, maybe we can't, okay? Maybe it just doesn't work. But could we at least take a look at it? And I think, at least I would feel better, maybe some of the rest of you feel the same way too, and-
I think our best hope at finding some scenario that doesn't improve or require a Stratford Road connection is to find some sort of error in the traffic study from before. It won't be due to, it won't be due to the change being proposed tonight, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Okay. What's the wish of the commission on this?
I'm not particularly in favor of tableing, because I don't think there's going to be anything you can do. We're going to have development, we're going to have traffic, we're going to have to deal with it. How do you stop it, other than say, no more development? Nobody wants that, except maybe me at times. I, I just, I don't see that you're going to be able to eliminate an access point there. And if you have one here, or you adjust it over here a little bit, you're still going to have that traffic coming out, some of them. Some will go the other ways. I just don't see the point in delaying, that's my opinion.
I second that opinion. I've done enough development to know that there's not a magical bullet that solves the need for getting people in and out of the site.
I just don't see how we have enough information in front of us with the questions that we brought up and the issues that we're trying to get addressed, that we can do anything but table this.
Are we, do you have the information you need to be able to come back with traffic study revision for this current proposal, or does it have to be redone?
I would have to depend on the developer's engineer to, to look at any revisions that would need made to the traffic study. I have the current traffic study as currently proposed.
So is a month enough to do that?
I suspect it's enough time to at least get your questions answered, and then it's probably helpful if we all, if they're answered at least satisfactory preliminarily to the commission. There's still then the city council portion of the process and another month to go in hearings after that, where we could certainly fill in any additional information. If you still have concerns, we can carry those forward to council.
I mean, this is still just a preliminary, isn't it?
It's a, it's a text amendment, and it's a preliminary.
So it's going to come back for final?
For finals, yeah, right.
So I don't want to reinvent the wheel and have him spend an extreme amount of time. I just think if, if we can look at this, and if we decide that there's just nothing we can do, go back in a month, then, then we can vote on it. If that doesn't slow you down terribly bad, I know you'd like to get approval now, but, you know, that's just, I don't know.
In a month, would you, would we consider a preliminary and final at the same time? Or is that's, that's, you wouldn't have enough time for all the, to have both at once, right? Where you wouldn't have everything back.
I doubt in a month we'd do that.
Yeah, you wouldn't have everything back for the, yeah.
I mean, I guess, when, when were you ideally looking to start construction, Jim? I mean, I'm not sure a month, to get a diagram that maybe puts it all together. I, I know, I know every day is money, and you're, you're burning the meter pretty fast, putting infrastructure in out there for two or three years, and that's, that meter's running fast. I appreciate that. But I think, it seems to me, just listening to the commission, they'll have to, someone will have to make a motion, they're going to have to decide here, but it seems to me that a majority of them would feel more comfortable with at least a, maybe a little bit clearer overall diagram, with the new part plus the old part together to show at least that connection up through the other sub-areas, and then certainly between the traffic experts here, that in a month, they'd be able to take a quick look at that. Access on Stratford. Is that the pleasure of the commission, though? I mean, at some point, somebody probably has to make a motion to table, and you take a vote and see where you're at, but-
Just, just, you know, like I say, I mean, if, if, if the opinion is, and, and I have to take his word for it, because he knows a hell of a lot more about traffic than I do, it's going to be there no matter what, okay? Then, since that seemed to be one of our biggest concerns, if we have to accept that, we have to accept it, okay? I'm, you know a lot more about than I do, so I'm not going to, you know, sit here and tell you, well, this is what we want, and what may gain difference was right, but, you know.
Yeah.
So if, if that's where we're at with that, that solves the one problem. And I think from what you're saying, more density isn't going to make the Stratford, that, that connection any easier to say, go away. It had to be there for the lower density, it'd be there for the bigger density. So then the other, other question is, is three stories, can we change it to two stories? But I think staff can work those details out. I mean, that's just, if that's, if we've got to say we're stuck on Stratford Road, as much as I dislike it-
Yeah.
Then it's either that or just get rid of the whole doggone proposal. And if we go back to the other one you had, with the houses, that road is still there. It didn't go away either, you know, so that means, and we've already approved that, it's going to be hard to get rid of that one.
Well, I think the commission knows the options that are available to them, so I guess I would ask the commission, how would we like to proceed?
I'll move to approve 2019-1578, with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
No.
Mr. Proll?
No.
Mr. Volnek?
No.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
No.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Okay.
So where are we, down or up?
We're down.
You're down on the text amendment case. So you can continue to vote on the other case if you like. You could at, now that you know where everybody stands on that vote, somebody on the winning side, which is the no side, could reconsider that vote, and then table the case to have another month to get the information that you've requested. Or you could continue on.
All right, so let me make sure-
Be my best advice to you. Connie could step up to the microphone and say, oh, given what you just did, could you please table me? She may not, she'll just wait for you to do your thing, but-
If, if we table it with the vote we just had, which is on request for the text amendment-
Right.
If we table it, do we table the whole thing, or do we have to go back?
Well, no, I think you have to reconsider what you just, the vote you just took in a formal way, so you reconsider your vote, and then you would make a motion to table both cases. Connie's the attorney sitting here, and I think I'm pretty sure I have that right.
So we can ask for a revote on 2019-1578? And if we approve the revote, then we can table the whole thing before we have another vote?
Yeah. As far as I understand, it would have to be somebody on the winning side of the vote, so it's the no side. So somebody on the no side would have to move to reconsider, and I would recommend the second to that should be somebody on the no side.
Then I make a motion to reconsider 2019-1578.
To, and the reconsideration is to really undo what you just did and move to table both cases.
Okay, so, but we have to pass-
If that's what you wanted to do.
So I put a motion on the table already to reconsider it, okay? So now all we're doing is waiting for a second on somebody who voted no.
And I think you're looking to reconsider to, to undo the no vote and to table the cases.
All at one time?
Correct.
Okay, and I make a motion-
I think you're, you're ending up at the same place, so.
To, to undo the vote on the 2019-1578, and then to table 2019-1578 and 2019-1579 for thirty days.
A motion by Mr. Halter? Second. Second by Mr. Proll.
It's close enough to thirty days.
It's pretty close.
Next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Just making sure since it was in the motion.
That's good.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your reconsideration and tabling, appreciate it.
I'm going to have to keep this paperwork now, right? I don't, I don't see how we can get it to get rid of it. Alexia can try. So I got to keep all this stuff. And I'll give it to you and you can straighten it back up again, since you're the mayor.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening under regular business. Could the clerk please read item C into the record? In, in just a moment.
Item C, Bell Commons Business Park, case one, 2018-1965, a request by Macapa LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for Bell Commons Business Park on approximately eleven point one-two-eight acres from R3 One Family Residential District to R3 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road. Case two, 2018-1966, a request by Macapa LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU planned mixed-use overlay district to be established for Bell Commons Business Park on approximately eleven point one-two-eight acres, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road. Case three, 2018-1967, a request by Macapa LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for Bell Commons Business Park on approximately eleven point one-two-eight acres on property zoned R3 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road. And case four, 2018-1968, a request by Macapa LLC for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for Bell Commons Business Park on approximately eleven point one-two-eight acres on property zoned R3 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bell Avenue and the east side of Liberty Road.
Thank you for your perseverance through that. All right.
Yeah, give you some history of this. About a year ago, the applicant came in and actually platted four lots along Bell Avenue. And actually, you guys have the plat today that was signed for that. The site is zone R3. Here's the area of the site, the four lots of these plats in this area. You can see that it's a vacant site. You can see trees along, a heavy tree line along the eastern portion and the south-southwestern portion of the site. Land use plan has high-density single-family. His proposal is for light manufacturing office-type uses in this area. This site is actually your quintessential mixed-use area, because you get Liberty Castings to the west, very heavy industrial, you have single-family to the east and south. This is a great transitional area, we think. We think the proposed use is transitional based on the development text limited to office and light industrial-type uses. Remember on the tree survey, this is the proposal actually, where he'd put in a road from Liberty Avenue, Liberty Road, and up to six lots, or it could be one lot, depending on who they sell it to. There would be a tree preservation area to the southwest, buffering the single-family residents to the south. There'd be a tree preservation area to the east, buffering any residents to the east. And then obviously, you've got his four lots here. So we think the buffering's in place for this type of use at this location. The only access would be from Liberty Road to this site. From a pedestrian connectivity perspective, a bike path is on our bike plan along Liberty Road, but it didn't identify which side. And actually, this time, they'd probably have to get a grant to install or to build such a bike path. What the engineer is going to require is a sidewalk along the east side of Liberty Road to this creek, it's right here, then extend the sidewalk on the north side of the creek to Bell Av- along Bell Avenue to connect in with those four lots that were originally approved. The expense of going across that creek is pretty high at this point. Then actually have a mid-block crossing on Bell Avenue in this area per the city engineer. They'll work out the details and the exact- They'll work out the details and the exact location of that once the final development plans are submitted, depending on how many lots end up being out there. Is it six, or is it one? We just don't know yet, and I don't think the owner at this time knows yet. Again, from landscaping and screening perspective, they'd have to put street trees and shade trees along Liberty Road and any internal street. The perimeter buffering is, the tree preservation does it to the east and south, so they wouldn't have to put any additional buffering. They may, if this lot is developed here, they may have to put some adjacent to these new single-family homes, depending on the exact site plan that we have when that's submitted. From a tree removal, they provided a tree inventory of how many ha- trees they took out. They took out about six hundred ninety-four caliper inches. However, they're preserving about six hundred seventy-five, so it's a net loss of nineteen caliper inches. So then they either have to replace those with trees on the future development, or pay, make a payment in lieu of nineteen hundred dollars. The lighting, any lighting on this development would have to meet the proposed development text, same with the signage. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning with one condition, the conditional use request with no conditions, the preliminary development plan with eleven conditions, and the preliminary subdivision plat with eleven conditions. Do we have to answer any questions you may have?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as we discussed with the four-lot subdivision that came before you, it was my hope and recommendation to the applicant that rather than doing the straightforward R three subdivision straight up to Liberty Road and immediately across the street from the heavy industry of Liberty Castings, that perhaps we could work through an opportunity like this to provide a reasonable transition between what is arguably one of our heaviest industrial uses, and then single-family homes primarily to the east and to the south. I think that's what the applicant has done in this case. I think that's what the use, that's been our intent as staff, as we've worked through the site plan and the use list. And then there are details, in addition to that, like dealing with the creek, the walkways, and that sort of thing. So, I'm appreciative that the applicant has brought this forward. Look forward to any of the comments or discussions. But it's important to remember, by right today, they could bring forward a subdivision, and as long as they have base code and, and access handled, they certainly could do that. And I would worry about homes that close to heavy industry, and what the value of those homes may be, and certainly, they would probably be minimum-size homes in those locations. And as you, as the commission is well aware, our code allows for some pretty small homes. So I think ultimately, that's probably not, doesn't leave the neighborhoods adjacent to that in necessarily the best condition, certainly not better than what this provides for. Especially when you count for what Lance has shaded off in blue here, which will be a tree preserve area, which provides additional buffer. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I've got concern about the trees on Liberty. I mean, it's not a curb section. You're gonna put a walk in there, ditch drainage. I don't know how the trees are gonna work in there. Trees along Liberty are fine, I guess. I worry about site distance, too, out in the intersection. But if the trees were put on the backside of the sidewalk, and you got the ditch between the sidewalk and edge of pavement, then you, you maintain your drainage, and maybe the trees won't hoove up the sidewalks like they did on my street, and you guys had to replace it.
Are you talking about the street tree requirement?
Yes.
Obviously, I mean, that requirement is just the, this is planned development, so we certainly could do that in this case. Our normal process is to have the street trees in the, in the tree row. But we do account for, very specifically, street trees being out of the site triangle. And in this case, I think it's a very good point that, given the geometry of the, of the Liberty Hill and Bell coming in, we'll have to really ensure that we sharpen our pencil with regard to that. If you want to move them to the back sidewalk, we could do that. Normal condition is that the right-of-way pretty much ends at the back of the sidewalk, however, so then street trees, we're probably talking about making them enaisements or moving things around.
Usually don't happen where you've got ditches.
Yeah, I think, I think- We, we do, actually, we, we do. We just talked about with the stronghold construction, street trees along London Road, and that's a ditch section, and it's just things get a little bit wider, is what happens at the end of the day, so that certainly would be the, these lots could accommodate that in the right-of-way, in the tree row, or behind the sidewalk. Hear your point, though, and certainly the site, the site distance point in this particular road section is a germane one.
That's about the only thing I ever comment on.
It also may determine if it's six lots or one lot, based on the future design also.
What would be required between, isn't that Liberty Park there? What would be required between the, yeah, right in there, and a buffer to the Liberty Park? Would there be any requirement on that?
That's actually a parking, the front portion.
Yeah.
Is a parking lot for General, or the casting company across the street? Would really not impact involved fields much at all, especially when you think about the, I would receive parking problems.
I, I was gonna ask if you could just give us a couple minutes, but since you, since you commented on that, I'm gonna need you just to give your name and address in the microphone for the record.
My name is Jim Allman, and my address is fifteen twenty Hyatt's Road, Delaware, Ohio.
Okay.
And when we worked through this, there was several things that, you know, we originally came in to be a single-family development, and it was, thought that it would probably be a better transition property, and so we thought that by leaving the four lots on Bell Avenue, that we did not impact Bell Avenue very much. And we put the tree preserve on the east side, so that the people could see that we had to care about them also, but the, will not ever, I don't believe that we're going to build a street and have small lots. I think it'll be one or two users ultimately that buys this track. It may be someone that would build a, a storage facility or something like that, but we don't foresee building a street. We have one entrance, one location on Liberty that meets the requirements for traffic in sight and distance, and that's what, where the drive will be, and it, it could be a a single, if a contractor, as an example, bought it and put a gravel drive, that would be what it would be. We're not building a road to have lots back there. I don't want to get, misrepresent anything. But that's, that's what we'd like to do.
To your question directly, Commissioner, about buffering between there and the property to the north, we are not recommending requiring that at this time. I mean, that property to the north is unbuffered to the General Liberty Castings facility at this time, and actually provide some parking for them at the front of their property, under an arrangement that they have. The uses and the intent here was to primarily have everything inside a structure. As you see in the zoning text, outdoor storage could be allowed, or fleet storage could be allowed as accessory, but would have to be screened. So for those lots to the north, if a user had a use like that, that they wanted to put in the, in the back of house, for example, back of their house, then they would have to screen that, and it, it would effectively screen the property to the north from those kinds of outdoor stores. But other than that, it would be parking lot, circulation area, and, and a building.
Yeah, we have absolutely no one looking at the site with, because we haven't promoted it, because we don't have the zoning in place yet. So I couldn't tell you what I expect. I'm a Realtor and have been a Realtor for a long time in this area, and I've sold this site twice, but hasn't worked out quite right yet. I'm hoping this does. I do, I would like to make-
That's good business plan, Jim. Sell the site two, three, four, five, six.
One comment I'd like to make on how you, the prior work that you were doing there. I had a very, very similar project in Westerville that Romanelli and Hughes did with apartments and, and different things, and quite honestly, when, and density was one of the subjects that came up in their end and everything, but they did a wonderful job. I mean, I'm not here speaking for Romanelli and Hughes, but I'm saying they did everything they said they would do, and, and they did a wonderful job. And it, the people like it now that it's a finished product, but that's all I'm saying.
Appreciate that feedback.
So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes. Anyway, back to my project. Sorry about that.
The reason we suggested adding the road there in the law tag gives him the most flexibility. If that happens to come that way, if it becomes one lot, he can just put one lot in. So this is in the future for him to sell it.
Would, would you have a problem if the trees were on the, I guess we call it the inside of the sidewalk, instead of on the outside?
Well, what I think is going to happen is we're going to start at the end of where the four lots are, where the sidewalk will be in front of them, and I think it'll be a bike path from there up to the other end, because-
I think, we're talking about a Liberty Street.
Liberty-
Liberty Road, excuse me, Liberty Road.
Liberty Road. It'll be a bike path along there. You, I, you said I could do a bike path or a sidewalk?
Bike, bike path or sidewalk, pedestrian connectivity-
Five feet one and seven was the other.
I, I think the, the question is, so you have Liberty, you have a ditch section, and then you have your bike path sidewalk. So, within that, do, do we want street trees on the street side of the sidewalk or bike path, or on the other side of the sidewalk or bike path? Is that-
Yeah, that's what-
Very sorry? It's not a question-
I, I don't envision trees being between the sidewalk and the street, if that's what you're saying. Am I answering you?
But they'll have to be on the, they'll have to be on the property side then. There's gonna have to be street trees, someplace.
Well, the, the trees, like where you would run it through the property on the, there would be trees, because I'm not cutting those trees in the preserve.
They're talking, Jim, about the required street trees, which is one tree every forty feet on center. Typically, that's in your tree lot, what we call a tree lawn. In this case, the tree lawn's a little bit different, because Liberty's not curbed, so it's not a traditional tree lawn, but certainly in counties and townships all across America, they have, and in the city of Delaware, we have ditch-section roads, street trees, and then our pedestrian improvements. What the commissioner's suggesting is, does it crimp your site down too badly if there's the road, the ditch section, the pedestrian improvement, and then your street trees, and then your site?
Well-
I think you probably, you have to accommodate it either way. You have to put in street trees. It's just a question of where.
Well, I, I mean, if I have to do it, I, I have to do it, but I, I want to do it to have the sidewalk as close to the road as I can.
So that would, that would probably be better to have the street trees on the east side of the sidewalk bike path, which I think is consistent with what the commissioner is asking for, so... So I think we got agreement.
Okay, let's not do anything else then.
It's getting late, but I think we got agreement.
Okay.
All right.
This is a question for engineering. The mid-block crosswalk down on Bell, would it go to Holly, or would it go past?
So it would be
Why go past?
Kind of a preliminary location, but the idea there was to make it a mid-block at the park, at Bell. I believe it's called Bell Park. I don't know if it's, there's a sign there that says that, but-
Okay.
So it would be between street intersections at
Between Holly, or just east?
Yeah. And depending on, you know, how, what would be most appropriate, it would, it would be a mid-block striped crossing. And that is in lieu of, since we, we're not requiring the exorbitant expense of building it down to the intersection of Liberty and Bell, so-
Right.
A pedestrian cannot cross there.
That's right.
That would provide a crossing from the south side of Bell to the north side of Bell.
Okay.
The park kind of seemed like a-
A logical-
Logical place.
Because if he did Holly-
I suppose you could do it at, at one of those.
Right, just because it makes sense, that's generally speaking.
And that could be done, too.
Okay.
Could be done, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions for staff or the applicant? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll open this up to public comment. If there's anyone here in the public who wishes to speak on this case, this is your opportunity to do so. And seeing nobody, I will bring it back to the commission. What's the wish of the commission this evening?
Make a motion, we approve twenty eighteen nineteen sixty-five, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve twenty eighteen nineteen sixty-six, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve twenty eighteen nineteen sixty-seven, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek.
Yes.
Mr. Badger? Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve twenty eighteen dash nineteen sixty-eight, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much, all.
No, you're fine. First reading on the talk.
For a public hearing.
So the first reading will be Monday, but it, you can be there, you don't need to be there, Jim. It sets the public hearing for two Monday, what, what's the date?
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth is the public hearing at council, so you need to be there.
I'm not seen to be there, it's March twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, and we, the clerk will set the time.
Mr. Allman, I'll, I'll send you the agenda as we get closer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on tonight's agenda, the planning director's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just a couple things tonight. We're, we're already here. Just want to give you an update on the cluster mailbox units. I know I've provided a little bit of an update for you that we were taking a look at that. The USPS is requiring across the nation, cluster mailbox units, rather than curbside mailbox service that we've all become accustomed to. This particularly affects the design of single-family detached subdivisions, more than apartments, which have had cluster mailboxes for quite some time. In addition to that, with the, the Amazoning of America and package delivery, and the, the advent of apparently an illegal activity that's known as porch pirates, or whatever, the, the claim is that the cluster mailboxes would also allow a more secure way to deliver these packages and setting it on your porch, and I guess somebody comes and robs you of your package. So, all that said, we've worked through at least the post office's standards to a sta- a coordinated staff level amongst several departments. And I think we have emerged with some design guidelines with respect to those, but you will, just heads up, you will see those starting to go up in subdivisions. We're trying to not have one large gang of mailboxes, if you will, if we have a single-family subdivision, but try to disperse those in as logical a place as we can. It's a little bit difficult when you have subdivisions in process like Terra Alta, where we now have, we didn't design these in originally, and now we have to fit them back in, basically. So some of these are gonna be the, the best job we can do at this point, and as we get brand-new subdivisions in, hopefully, we'll get better and better at this. There's a little bit of a learning curve for us all as well, and some differences of opinion amongst staff, but we've come together on our design guidelines, and we certainly want to make sure the post office will allow us to require that these aren't just- to make sure, the post office will allow us to require that these aren't just the sort of standard gun-metal-gray boxes. The best example I can give you that would fit our design guidelines today in terms of design of the boxes themselves would be the communities of Glen Ross, the small lot sections. If you've had an opportunity to drive out there, they're, they're black, they have a little top on them, a little more, there's not much you could do with the design on cluster mailboxes. It looks better than gun-metal gray box, is that what you're saying?
I was, I was actually going to ask if blue vein limestone would be a good one.
No, we're trying to keep that, it's a good question, we're trying to keep that improvement to their standards, but also minimal, and deal with the fact, the, the reality, Mr. Halter, appreciate this, that no matter which way we face them, people are going to come up in their car, stop, go to their mailbox, typically on the way home. We'd like to think everybody would walk to them like we all do the end of our driveway now when we get home. Maybe that'll occur, but, so which way you face it, the road or the sidewalk side, I think we settled on the sidewalk side to facilitate, for a lot of reasons.
I don't want it in front of my house.
Yeah, that's one of the questions that's come up. So, you know, you'll be hearing, I'm sure, from your constituents about some of that, but it's just that, out west and other places, they've been doing this, so, we're not necessarily trailblazers, but it's a change for our environment. Cop Plan Steering Committee, we had a good meeting, I think, here a couple of weeks ago, a lot of information about housing market and studies, and I could certainly send that to those of you that aren't on that committee, if you're interested, you can hit the Delaware Together website, that is supposed to be, being put up there by the consultant as we finish that product, I can share with you what we have. Very interesting, and fit really some of our land use exercises that we've gone through as a committee, but also some of the public feedback, I believe, that we've heard through that process. And there, those were kind of conducted independently, but the information is starting to come together and coalesce around some ideas with respect to land use, particularly in the southwest and the southeast. We have another Conference of Plan Steering Committee slated for early September, at which we will be drilling down through some of the details of the land use in those two sections in particular, so I encourage those members on the committee certainly to attend that meeting, and anybody else is welcome to observe as well. We, the city council did appropriate funds to, for the city of Delaware to not only be part of the regional housing study conducted by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, but to ensure that our appropriation allows us a seat on the steering committee, seat at the table, if you will. There are many other communities in central Ohio that are engaged in that activity as well, which I think is a good thing. It started off as kind of a Columbus market study, and they were receptive to the idea of, let's, let's look a little bit more regionally, and then if we can get partners in that, take a little, a, a more specific look at those communities that decided to be partners. So we decided to be partners in that. And the first meeting is tomorrow morning, the steering committee down at Morpsey, they, I guess I'm on the steering committee as appointment from the city, so I have a little dinner and turn around and head downtown in the morning, but that will, that information will be good, I think, and help augment our housing study that we're doing for the Conference of Plan, and be another input into that process ultimately. That, that would be my hope, as a member of that steering committee now. So I just wanted to let you know that that's going on as well, and could provide you any of the detailed information. Lance, in terms of next month, the cases on the-
Right now, we have three cases, and obviously Coglin's crossing.
So we're up to four. That's all I have tonight, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't think anybody's got any questions due to the hour, so we'll move right along to our commission member comments and discussion, we'll just roll right around the table. Dean, start with you.
Catch you, brother.
If you could all just save your paperwork from Coglin, so we don't kill another tree, this one was a hundred and fifty-one pages, so just put it away, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep his, don't worry.
Please, I got it, I get special treatment.
Yes, you do, because you're asking.
I, I-
And thank you for serving on that community.
Oh, hey, you're welcome, I'm excited.
Yeah, just to, when your mayor gets to talk about it, it's really exciting to have that happen, so, thank you.
So, do I understand that we're going to have to go through our normal agenda process and put this out for the public again, and for, for ourselves as staff, but as commission members, you're, you don't want this reproduced for you?
Correct.
As we come with maybe new diagrams or complete-
Yes, just fill in the new information.
The overlay would be nice.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a lot of paper, I agree.
Our copier thanks you.
I guess.
And the clerk. And the clerk.
I have nothing, I have nothing.
I apologize for causing the trouble.
Stop.
Just thought it was time to move forward.
Well, and that's fine.
And that's what we did.
Okay.
Yep. No comments.
As always, thanks for your hard work and dedication, for all you guys do for the city from a staff level. Appreciate your candor tonight, I mean, you basically said it's not going to make a difference, but you left it just open and, just open, like just a little crack in the facade. So our next regular meeting, September fourth, two thousand nineteen, if you have any conflicts or can't make it, please let our wonderful clerk Elaine know. With that, we will end this session at nine twenty-six PM.